Okay, 6:30 we'll call the meeting to order. If Mauricio, you wanna, you wanna call the roll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Goldman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Svechnikoff?
Here.
Mayor Scholl?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. Okay, if we could rise to the pledge. Roberto, you're up today.
(inaudible)
Thank you.
Okay, tonight Rabbi Baron is gonna do our invocation and I told him he was a big draw. So Rabbi.
Thank you. Good evening. Dear God, Master of the Universe, we stand humbled before you this evening as we recognize all of your blessings that you have bestowed upon us collectively as a community and individually as private citizens. We are mindful of the fact that you have blessed this city with wonderful leadership, direction, dedication, and guiding spirit which has resulted in the many successful achievements over the last 22 years here on Sunny Isles Beach and we praise you for this. We recognize that we are gathered before you this evening in pursuit of fulfilling your wishes. You, Almighty God, empowered humanity with seven universal laws after the great flood of Noah. Universal laws that should provide a framework of law, order, and justice which will allow humanity to settle the earth in a civilized manner. We recognize that we have been entrusted by the citizens of Sunny Isles Beach to perform this sacred duty. We recognize that our decisions here this evening will have a lasting impact far into the future. So Almighty God, please provide us with a consciousness to constantly be aware of your presence so that we're consistent to our mandate. Please grant us the wisdom, intuition, and sensitivity to succeed so that we leave a legacy of having a positive impact upon society for many generations to come. Please guide our police department and city staff to make the right decisions with honesty, integrity, and knowledge for all of our citizens into the future and may they continue to serve as positive role models for our beautiful community. Almighty God, in these times we do not take our safety and security for granted. Protect our police force, our servicemen and women serving domestically and overseas in the name of freedom and democracy. Please give them the peace of mind, insight, and intuition to be successful. May everyone gathered here tonight and all the residents of Sunny Isles Beach be granted with good health, peace of mind, and prosperity and let us say amen.
Amen. Thank you Rabbi. Thank you. Okay, we've got a city commission meeting of June 20th, a special meeting. Do I hear an approval for the minutes, a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Could we roll the tape, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that come before the city commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly Section 74-21 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on any item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker's card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair and/or do not cease speaking after one warning, you will be escorted out of the chambers.
Okay, we've got some modifications tonight. We've got 10D has been revised, which is our flood adaption and assessment project. We've got three add-ons, 10L, 10M, and 10N. 10L is Craven Thomas Engineering Consultants, 10M is Hardisty and Hanover, and 10N is funds for the Easeman acquisition at 174th and Collins. Do I hear a motion to accept the changes to the agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. We just realized that we had never formally introduced our new city attorney, Ed Dion. So Ed has a very illustrious background. He was the city attorney for Broward County and he's been with us now, how long, Ed? Three whole months, so, but I wanted to introduce Ed to everyone tonight as well. First, we've got no special presentations tonight, so our first order of business is our zoning hearing and I have an opening statement for that as well that I have to read here. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening's agenda has two zoning applications and these matters the commission sits in a quasi judicial capacity. The decision of whether or not to approve a zoning variance is not a popularity contest but must be based upon substantial competent evidence as it is presented tonight. If you intend to provide testimony on any zoning application, you must be sworn in by the city clerk and you should also fill out a public speaker card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. We will first hear from city staff and then from the applicant. After this, I will allow anyone from the audience who's been sworn in to provide testimony. The zoning applicant has the right to cross-examine any witness and for rebuttal, please make your comments concisely. Mr. City Clerk, please read your introductory zoning statement.
In accordance with the LDRs of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, all items to be heard today have been legally advertised in the newspaper, notices have been mailed, and posted on the properties. All persons wishing to speak at this hearing, please raise your right arm to be sworn in. This is for the zoning.
This is for zoning. The, yeah, the item, the item that's causing the turmoil is not a zoning application.
So the applicant and whomever is representing the applicant.
Got it.
Okay, so, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so we go to item 6A, which is a site plan modification? Okay, Claudia?
You're gonna read?
I thought Mauricio had to read it? No?
Yes.
No, okay, great. Claudia?
I'm sorry, Mayor, before we continue, is there any ex-party communication for 6A?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, this site plan modification, it is located at the mansions at Aquolina located at 17749 Collins Avenue, Unit 2602. The applicant of this site plan modification is requesting to increase their floor area ratio by 229 square feet of FAR. Basically what this increase will do is allow them to enclose a section of their balcony. So it will bring their unit from 4,609 square feet of floor area to 4,838 square feet of FAR. Can I go back to one item? Are we gonna tie up the items 10A, which is for the TDR resolutions, with this 6A?
Sure we can.
Or we might continue?
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. Can we do that?
Can we put 6A and 10A together? Okay. So why don't you read 10A into the record?
10A is a resolution authorizing the transfer of development rights in the amount of 229 square feet of floor area and zero dwelling units to Greenberg Aquolina LP. Ian Greenberg for the property located at 17749 Collins Avenue, Unit 2602, from the city's TDR bank account.
So the applicant is requesting the purchase of TDRs in the amount of 229 square feet of FAR. In this case, the TDR price in 2019, it came at $110 per square foot, whereas in 2017, the price for a similar balcony closure was at 200, I'm sorry, $125 per square feet. So we wanna make the recommendation to, to accept the price of $125 per square feet for this balcony closure of 229 square feet of floor area ratio. The applicant is here to continue with this presentation, but basically it's very minor TDR purchase.
Okay. Does the applicant want to speak?
Do you want to speak?
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Commission, City Clerk, City Attorney. Thank you for having me. I'm here to represent Mr. Greenberg and his corporation.
Name and address for the record. That's okay.
Carmin Tillit. Address, 2340 Northeast 192nd Street, Miami 33180. As Claudia mentioned, it's a very simple TDR process. We're asking to do the enclosure of our balcony pretty cut and dry. I think our only floating item would be the cost. Part of the application requires us to come in and submit for a appraisal of the property. We did do an appraisal on this a few weeks ago as part of our submittal and it appears that property prices have changed a little bit and dropped a tiny bit. What used to be a couple of years ago, $125, today is $110 per square foot. I'll let you make the right decision.
Okay, so, okay, so Claudia, what's the staff recommending?
Staff just recommended that we go for $125 per square feet. The purchase is minor, but it will, it will continue with the trends and we believe that the value, it's accurate for the acquisition that they're doing.
Okay, and the delta is $15 a square foot times like 40, I mean it's a small?
Times 229 square feet in this particular case.
Okay, understood, so.
Approximately $3,000 in change.
Understood, okay. Any questions for the applicant? No? No questions? Okay.
I'll move to approve.
Okay, do I hear a motion at the recommendation of staff?
Motion at the recommendation of staff.
Staff, okay. Do I hear it?
Mayor, I think, I think we need two votes on this.
Okay, right, right. Okay, one on 6A and then 10A. And then we'll vote on 10A. So on 6A, you gotta, that's a voice vote? Yep, okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay, Mauricio?
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Svechnikoff?
Yes.
Mayor Scholl?
Yes.
The application is approved.
Okay, so now for 10A, which is the actual, the resolution for the TDRs, do I hear a, I hear, first, I got a second. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, I apologize, but just for clarification, that was at the $125.
That was at the $120. We're taking the recommendation of staff. Right, thank you. Okay, item 6B?
This is another site plan modification at the mansions of Aquolina for a balcony enclosure, Unit Number 3301. Similar than the previous one, this is a site plan modification to increase the floor area ratio by 789 square feet. The purpose is the same, is to enclose a portion of their balcony. This unit will be increased from 8,476 square feet of FAR to 9,265 square feet of FAR. The item in this for the TDRs is also 10B, so if we wanna bring to the record Mauricio, also item 10B, which is the TDR resolution.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of development rights in the amount of 789 square feet of floor area and zero dwelling units to 17749 Collins, Collins owner LLC for the property located at 17749 Collins Avenue, Unit TS 3301, from the city's TDR bank account.
We are proposing the same recommendation is to approve the site plan modification with the pricing of TDRs on $125 per square foot of FAR.
Okay.
Can I read?
Yes.
Ready to, any comments?
I think the applicant wants to speak. Yep, one more time.
Carmin Tillit, 2340 Northeast 192nd Street, Miami 33180. Here to represent Mr. Reese, the owner of 3301. Same scenario.
Got it, thank you.
We're enclosing our balcony, a little bit of a larger balcony, but same scenario.
Larger balcony, bigger unit. Okay, so the bigger unit just got bigger, or it's getting bigger. Okay, any?
No comments, just a move, a motion?
Yep, motion for?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the zoning, item 6B. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mauricio?
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Svechnikoff?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Scholl?
Yes.
The application is approved.
Okay, now if you wanna read?
10B.
10B into the record and we'll go for that one as well.
I read it to the record.
Oh, you read it to the record already? Okay, okay, do I hear a motion approved?
Motion.
This is for 10B?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, we're done.
Thank you very, very much.
Okay, the zoning hearing's closed and we go on to ordinances for first reading and we're gonna start with item 7A. Mauricio?
An ordinance of the city commission of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, adopting the city of Sunny Isles Beach Comprehensive Plan Text-Based Amendments, approving the transmittal of the amendments to the Department of Economic Opportunity and reviewing agencies in accordance with Section 163.3184 of the Florida statutes, providing for severability, providing for repealer, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date, and this is first reading.
Okay, I'm gonna make a small opening statement on this one. So basically tonight, what I would appreciate is, we got a lot of folks that are gonna wanna speak and I, number one, I would appreciate if folks can keep their, like, you know, applause or, you know, if you're for it or against it at a minimum because it just, it takes up a lot of time. Second of all, if somebody's gotten up and said something already, you can say, "I agree" with that issue and then, and then we move on. So that way we're not kinda repeating the same thing over and over and that sometimes happens when we have these types of hearings. The one thing I wanna be clear about on this item is that we've gotten obviously a lot of emails and a lot of correspondence on this item. No development project is being considered this evening, okay? So you're gonna learn tonight kinda what's happening here. This is a, this is a technical issue with our comprehensive plan. It's been a lot of information disseminated and it's been, and I can tell by mostly emails that we've gotten, a lot of folks don't really understand what's really happening here. It's okay, because we're gonna sort it out tonight. That's, that's the good news about, about, you know, having a public hearing. And I wanna be clear about what's gonna happen, if this, if this, if this recommendation to send this to the state is passed tonight, okay, it's gonna go to the state before it goes to second reading. When we have ordinances in the city, when they're passed, they have two readings. They get passed, they go through a first reading and then they go to a second reading. So they get split over two meetings, so everybody has two shots at them, okay? In this case, it's a little bit different because if this ordinance gets passed, it's gonna go to the state. The state has experts that review these things and then the state can shoot it up or shoot it down based on their review and then it will come back to us and then, once it's, once we have the recommendation from the state, up or down, then it'll go to a second reading. So I just wanna be clear that, that no matter what happens tonight, nothing's getting codified before it goes to the state, before it goes through second reading. So with that, again, I would appreciate just everybody respecting everybody. There's gonna be differing opinions. I know it's heated, you know, we've, I got a lot of email on this one and like I've said many times, I'm actually glad when I see the public this engaged because it shows that we're all, you know, you know, that we're all still alive and we get fired up about things, so that's not a bad thing. But, so tonight what I wanna do is, Claudia's gonna speak, the folks from R.K. have been, you know, you know, you know, very active in this one, so we're gonna let them, their expert come up and speak and then, and then we'll, we'll, we'll deal with any, you know, any rebuttal or any misclarifications and then we're gonna open it up to public hearing. So then we're gonna deal with all the public speaker requests and then at the end, the commission will speak. So that's pretty much how we typically do these things, but, you know, you know, tonight, we're gonna let Claudia open and then we're gonna take it from there. So Claudia, and then Mauricio, have we got public speaker?
Yes, I have him here. We're just waiting for someone that are coming in.
Okay.
I'll hold on to it till the end.
Meanwhile, we're gonna pass around some presentations. We have some visuals for tonight, so we can make this easy to digest. And also we have some boards if the members of the public actually they can refer to those, to those boards. Okay, so you can also refer to the presentation that we're going to have in the TVs, please.
Claudia, Claudia, grab the mic, get in front of the mic.
I have this one. Can you hear me well?
Can we hear okay? Okay, okay.
I'm gonna get closer. I'm gonna try to be looking at it, so I don't do this. As the mayor mentioned earlier, this is the first reading of a text-based comprehensive amendment, so it can be transmitted to the state for their review, okay? Through this comprehensive plan timeline, we're gonna go from the year 2000 to today's date and we're gonna state the facts of why we are here tonight. In the comprehensive plan of the year 2000, which was the year where this document was adopted, this document, as you know, it is the guiding and principal document of the city. In that original document?
Claudia, hold one second, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Okay, our screens are flickering, Mike. Okay, we got it?
Jennifer?
Oh.
No.
So, what's going on?
She was. Technical, technical issues.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, all right, all right.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that, folks. Okay, Claudia?
So I was talking about it, that we have prepared tonight this timeline. It will bring you from the year 2000 to today's. Actually, we are, we are going with the regional, the regional comprehensive plan and how it was adopted. In this document, you can see that the town center language included actually authorized land uses or development intensities different or greater than the underlying land uses designations on the future land use map. And the more liberal provisions of the plan shall govern when jointly adopted by the affected property to its owners and the city, okay? So we can see clear that in the year 2000, this was the intention of the town center. As it mentioned, it was to actually intensify that area within the town center, okay? Over here in the map, we're going to clarify some of the issues. The area town center, designated town center, is what you see dotted in that map over here to my right. The red color highlighted by yellow, it is the underlying use that we are discussing tonight. The name of that land use is mixed-use business. As you can see, the dotted area, it is the town center area, so we are partially dealing with a section of the town center. And as the process go, basically when a city adopted their comprehensive plan, then they have to move on and adopt their land development regulations. These are commonly known as zoning code. In 2002, we have our first land development regulations. They were adopted according with an ordinance, okay? Next, after that, after several community engagement activities, public hearing, et cetera, a town center zoning code was adopted. This took longer because of the specificity and the certification that it wanted to take place in that area, as you know, and how a town center is being defined, okay? In this 2004 zoning code, you have specifications as to what was the FAR, which is the square footage that it can be built, and the density, which is the number of units that they can be built. So when the city was ready, it has the comprehensive plan approved by the state, it has their local development regulations, the land development regulations, I'm sorry, the zoning code. We were ready to start accepting site plan applications, just as the one that you just approved. So during, during the period of 2004 to 2009, we had six site plan applications that they were interpreted and they were based in the existing comprehensive plan of the time and the zoning code of the time, which both they were in compliance. These are some of the projects that they were reviewed and they were approved during that time. Moving forward, the comprehensive plan, they call it, it is a living document. It has to be evaluated and this process is called evaluation and appraisal report. This process allows each city to figure it out if they're meeting the intent of their comprehensive plan. In 2007, that was the fair, the first time that the city went through this process. In this year, the city attempted to include densities and intensities in the town center, but in the final adoption of the ordinance, they reflected the state recommendation. So you can see over here that you had a first reading, as you're having tonight, then it was a second reading and it was adopted. Finally, adoption, it got also an in compliance letter from the state, meaning your comprehensive plan was kept under, in compliance. Moving forward with this timeline, in 2011, they were Florida statutes that they were amended that required that densities and intensities were included in all land uses depicted on the plan. You can see the language here highlighted. At that time, we didn't amend our comprehensive plan, but we kept interpreting the same, in the same way that we have been doing it with the next set of applications, site plan applications that we received. There were several applications during the year 2011 to 2018. Moving forward to the year 2016, in this, it was again the comprehensive plan evaluation and appraisal report where in this time, we actually got comments from the state and we proposed in the mixed-use business, which is the underlying area that we have in front of here, to allow for a density of 85 units per acre and an FAR of 2.0. This evaluation and appraisal report was found also in compliance by the state in the year 2016. DEO, which is the Department of Economic Opportunity, is the entity reviewing for this amendment. And during this timeline, the last application that we had to review, it was the HABAD that is located at 488 Sunny Isles Boulevard, okay? So this is the background information and the facts that we, that we have in front of you. So at this point, it has come to our attention that a clarification is necessary to provide for a clear set of documents, so we have our documents aligned with each other. This is why we have gone through this history and we have related the facts of this issue. It is very important to bring clarity to the regional intentions and the guidelines of the comprehensive plan. Today, the amendment that we are going to be proposing to the state, it deals with a range of density to allow for only in the mixed-use business area when it's located in the town center. This range of units or density is going to be proposed to between 60 and 85 to 85 units per acre and a floor area ratio between 2.5 to 3.5. And this, again, I repeat, it's for the mixed-use business land use area only when it is within the town center. The next step of this process, if this is approved, it will go and be reviewed by the state. If the state has any comments, we will have to address them before coming to you for a second reading. It will hold a second public hearing and we will adopt the amendments. This finalized the presentation and if you have any other comments, we will happy address them.
Okay, any questions for Claudia? I think we, yeah.
I have some.
Okay, go ahead. Jennifer?
Claudia? Maybe some of these questions are for you, some of these questions may be for Ed.
You wanna pull your mic closer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, we got it.
Fixing that, okay. All right, can you hear me?
No.
Pull your mic closer.
Okay, is this better? I'll just be louder, how about that? I'll just be louder. So I, you know, as Mayor Scholl said, we received a lot of emails and in those emails, there were, there were a lot of comments that, that for me also raised questions. In some of the responses that you guys have gotten from me, I noted that it wasn't that long ago that I was on that side and I would have questions too, so I wanted to, based on those emails, throw some questions at you and maybe, you know, whoever. know, whoever else can answer. But one of the questions that was raised in the emails was, what does text-based amendment mean?
So, in the comprehensive plan, you have a map or a series of maps, and you have text. You have the wording. Okay? At this moment, we are proposing amendments just to the wording of that document. We are not amending any of the maps, the future land use map or any of the series maps that we have.
And does it amend the function of the statute?
No.
Okay. Okay. The other, there was a couple, does this amendment change the law itself to increase density and intensity? That's the language in the petition that was circulated.
As I mentioned before in the presentation, in 2016, the density, it was 85. So, what we have today under that, under that mixed-use business area is 85 units per acre. What we are proposing is to create a range, so it can bring clarity to what the intent of the regional town center is. The FAR is also to propose a range, so it can bring up the regional intent of that area.
Okay. I have other questions, but I'll save them for later, but I just had the one more. Does this amendment constitute an upzoning?
No, there is no upzoning. Again, I repeat myself, in 2016, it was, the density was already at 85 units per acre. We are proposing a range.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Dana?
You a little bit glossed over the 2007 amendments. So, there's been a lot of discussion about, I know there's a discussion about the 2016 comprehensive plan amendments, but probably unbeknownst to us, anybody here on the dais, there was this issue of the 2007 where the densities and intensities of the town center district were actually, I guess, opposed by the state agency and then removed from that. So, that, I just want you, I wanna drill down a little bit on what happened in 2007, and why in that rejection was that just recently unearthed in all this discussion?
Sure. The state, back then, in 2007, after the city transmitted their comment, their amendments, sorry, the state commented on it, and the state merely requested for more information. They wanted the city to provide the data and the analysis to be provided, so they can corroborate if the level of service they were maintained into that area.
And then this, and then basically, the city withdrew it because they couldn't provide the information?
I cannot attest to what happened at the time.
So, basically, in 2007, they actually removed those densities and intensities from the comprehensive plan, right? Or they didn't-
They were never included. It was only interpreted language in the comprehensive plan when it relates to the town center.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question.
Marissa?
This is similar to Commissioner, this is similar to Commissioner Viscar. This is just some of the questions that I received. Can you please clarify one of the pages in the document that talked about the school board and how that works in?
Sure. So, we need to submit this amendment to agencies. One of these agencies is the school board. The school board submitted their review, and basically, what the school board is saying is that these issues of capacity of seating in the school, it has to be addressed whenever you have a side-plan application in front of you. Basically, those seats, they don't exist today. They will only be there or required to be there whenever you have a side-plan application in front of you. Therefore, if there is a lack of seating, or it doesn't mean concurrency, as the schools say, then it will have to be addressed there. In the existing comprehensive plan, there is language to mitigate those issues, as we have done it in the past. But today, in this comprehensive plan amendment, we are not dealing with that process because we are not included any side-plan application.
So, at this time, it's not an issue?
There is not an issue, and we have those mitigation language in the existing complex, so we can deal with those as we approach those situations.
Have we had any similar situations where-
Yes. We run into the same situation. The first one that I can recall, it was when the Porsche project was being presented, they didn't meet concurrency for the school. The process that is in place is that, because we have an inter-local agreement with the school board, that the developer, the city, and the school board enter into an agreement, and they have to create this bank to pay, basically, for the impact that is going to be down the years, down the road, whenever that development actually gets completed.
And just to clarify, because you went through the maps a little bit quickly, I know that we've looked at them, we've looked at them, but can you just say, as far as the streets are concerned, what we're talking about right now, exactly, the street numbers that this would affect?
The street numbers? Okay. So, the area that we are discussing, it is south of 172nd Street, to Sunny Isles Boulevard to the south, west of Collins Avenue, and basically, is that section that it will be in between, I will call it, between Plaza of Americas and the shopping centers and the other building, Avila South, and the other parking lot that is behind Epicure. So, the areas in red are the areas that we are discussing tonight. The entire area, for your information, is 32.7 acres, which is 28% of the entire town center area.
And if this was to pass today, and then, again, for second reading, does this mean that we would have to always vote yes for any development that came into that area based on this?
No.
No.
You, whenever you have a side-plan, you have to vote into that side-plan on its own merits. They will be evaluated independently from each other.
Okay. That's all for now. Thank you.
Any other questions? Alex?
Yeah, I have a question. So, the dwelling units per acre, the base is 25 and the max is 85, correct? For the mixed use-
That is the language that we're trying to clarify, exactly.
Okay, okay. No, but that was already in the comprehensive plan from 2016?
It is already in the comprehensive plan, exactly. But we're trying to clarify it on how it is applied whenever it's in the town center.
What about the floor area ratio?
The same case. We have a 2.0, and we wanted to clarify the intent of originally the town center area when these lands were to be developed.
But the comprehensive plan from 2016-
Included 2.0.
It's a 2.0?
Correct.
But right now, we're looking to take it from 2.5 to 3.5?
To provide a range between 2.5 and 3.5.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Danny, you wanna, do you have an expert you wanna, you wanna have your expert come up, or how do you wanna handle it?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Courtney Crush, representing RK Associates. We have several people with our team who we'd like to speak, so if I can introduce to speak, first Mitch Cutler, Dan Katz, Andrew Dzdar, and co-counsel Ben Brodsky. And I will speak after Mr. Cutler, if that suits the commission.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to read this letter on behalf of Renan Katz. To the mayor, commissioners, city employees, and residents, please accept my apology that I am not able to attend the hearing this evening. I have appointments with my physicians in Boston, and they have recommended that I not travel at the present time. My son Daniel Katz and the entire RK team are very familiar with the current issue and will be able to convey my opinions about the matter at hand in a comprehensive manner. They are all very familiar with the current zoning and why the proposed amendment should be rejected by the commission. My shopping centers will remain intact. Neither I nor any of my children or grandchildren have any intention of redeveloping our properties for vertical residential use, so please stop saying that the proposed amendments would be beneficial to me. As you are aware, I own over 90% of the retail commercial space in the town center area. Therefore, I would suspect that you would carefully take my position into account before accommodating a new developer to the area who is not vested in our community in any way, shape, or form. This group is proposing to build a monster building next to my Marshall Shopping Center without having the ability to provide the proper parking for its clientele. This two-acre property is the last parcel of land that is still vacant in our densely developed community. For the well-being of all of our citizens, it should be used to create a city park that would serve as a much-needed amenity for the many residents of Sunny Isles that are opposed to this change in land use. RK's position on this matter is that the city should reject the change in land use and spend its efforts on the beautification of the city parks, the repair of lights on Collins Avenue, and other matters which will improve the quality of life for all of us. Thank you for listening. Regards, Renan Katz.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Courtney Crush again. I believe each of you should have a copy of Cecilia Ward's expert opinion. You may have seen some prior correspondence and studies from Ms. Ward during the course of 2019. With respect to this proposed land use plan amendment, and first and foremost, with respect to this hearing this evening, I believe that pursuant to your code and also pursuant to state law, what this city is required to do is to convene as the local planning agency and consider any proposed land use plan amendment and make recommendations at the conclusion of that. Following that recommendation, the city commission, again pursuant to 26510, is required to consider on first reading and ordinance, and then on second reading. Originally sitting as the local planning agency, there should be appropriate notice for what you are to discover and discuss. The notice that was sent out, published in the Miami Herald at all, does not provide to any property owner, or in my opinion, to a reasonable person, the import and the increase in potential density and intensity in the 32 acres of your city. It did not include a proposed map either, and you are here sitting this evening, again, with a first reading of an ordinance in front of you, instead of convening as the local planning agency as required by your code and state law, including a non-voting member of the school board and having that discussion. It's both legally and practically something that this city commission should do and practically makes a lot of sense, as you can tell from the strong concern in the room and the great number of people here seeking information. Land use plan, as your planning director indicated, it's your constitution, essentially. It is your basic rights, and with respect to density and intensity, it sets your ceilings. Commissioner, as you commented in some of your dialogue back and forth with the planning director, in 2007, there was a request to raise the ceiling in your city. At that point in time, the state of Florida indicated that that was not going to be acceptable without data and analysis. Obviously, the state and your council and director share with you, do that because there are potential impacts of increasing your population, of increasing significantly density and intensity. At that point in time, the city elected not to go forward. As recently as 2008 and then in 2016, where there was an ear-based amendment transmitted up to the state of Florida, and if you take a look at Exhibit 7 to Ms. Ward's report, your outside consultant concluded that at that point in time in 2016, maximum density was 50 units an acre, and maximum intensity is 2.0. So, in this entire town center, not just the mixed-use business area, the state has been clear with the city that the maximums are by the established land use categories. The town center is a wonderful set of goals that you have in your land use plan, and the city has several times sought to work towards a vision, not only of the mix of uses and all the wonderful things that a town center brings, but also to increase that density and intensity, and to date has not done so. What this commission is discussing this evening is potentially increasing density on the 32 acres that could add another 1,145 dwelling units. It could also increase number of hotel rooms to 8,549. And again, that is summarized and the calculations are set forth in the document that you have before you. This could actually end up with an increase of a total number of people in this city utilizing your roads, in some cases, utilizing schools, water and sewer capacity of another 11,016 people. This is a significant conversation and a significant proposal. The fact that it has been part of a vision and not studied, not formally gone through any legal process to date, does not alter the fact that this is a proposed significant increase of density and intensity. So, skipping this first local planning agency discussion and step as to whether you, as the local planning agency, would want to recommend to the then-sitting city commission that this is something that you would like to do, perhaps because there may be projects that have been approved under your zoning, which has a higher ceiling than your land use cap. And the state was very clear, if you look at Exhibit 3 again to the report, the state said the city should not have adopted its zoning regulations that exceed its land use. That remains the case. With respect to the backup and the data, if one were to proceed forward with such a significant amendment, your consultant's data assumes that 60% of the 32 acres is going to be residential and the remaining 40% going to be non-residential. That's not what your text-based amendment in the backup says. It uses the word "and," not "or." So, when I'm sharing and you have, again, in front of you, the numbers, there is nothing that precludes residential density in addition to non-residential uses as part of the same application with the new FAR limit, which is now not 2.0, but 3.5. If you also continue to look in the backup, you will see that, again, there is, at the lower numbers, the numbers that have not been appropriately analyzed, still an impact on schools. What has not been fully analyzed is impacts on traffic and how that this marries with the city's land use plan amendment goal, not to add any additional density and intensity in your coastal high-hazard area. Unfortunately, this, what is before you, Commissioners, respectfully, this evening, is a proposed land use plan amendment that fails. It fails because it is skipping a step that both the state of Florida and the city's code identify as a first key step with the appropriate members, not only of you as local planning and agency members, but a school board member. It fails, actually, to include the potential analysis of projects that may have been approved outside the mixed-use business. There are approved projects that were mentioned by some of you that are not addressed and perhaps constructed projects that are not addressed as part of this proposed increase in the town center mixed-use area only. It also fails because it doesn't honor your comprehensive plan ceiling. You have a ceiling. Before one increases it, particularly in the coastal high-hazard area, you, I imagine, would have consensus and a thought of what your goal is. Is it to help projects that may have been approved and constructed that require, as your planning director indicated, clarification? And I think her staff report indicates modification to your approved intensities. Before one would go forward down that path, it would be incredibly important to listen to, as I know you regularly do, your citizens and your stakeholders. As Mr. Cutler indicated, Renan Katz owes 90% of the property that is proposed to be included as part of this amendment. While we may say that this amendment is only a portion of what needs to be addressed, it's the wrong portion. This is not a property owner or a citizen who, as active as those properties are, needs to be burdened by increased density and intensity without it being appropriately discussed. You as policymakers indicating that is something you are desiring to do independent of the approved buildings, or perhaps you would focus on those buildings, and certainly not without impacts being assessed. What is in the backup- What is in the backup in front of you today has presumptions with the 60-40 split that result in artificial numbers, and they still indicate a potential problem and unanalyzed components. With that, we are happy to answer any questions you may have of us, but we strongly, on behalf of RK Associates, oppose the land use plan amendment to the 32 acres that, again, could add more than 1,000 residents to your city, more than 8,500 hotel rooms, and more than another million square feet of development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So again, so before we, you want to speak, Dan, before we? It's up to y'all. Yeah, I think what I probably would like is for Claudia, because obviously, we've got our own interpretation of all this stuff, and it's complicated, as we all can hear. But Claudia, do you want to speak to the issues that were outlined by Courtney? Because I think that they're the issues outlined in their expert documents, so.
Sure. And the first issue that I'm going to target over here is in terms of the notices, okay? So pursuant to our city code, Section 265--
Okay, hold on. Courtney, what's the problem?
In terms of the--
The notices.
Notices.
Notices, yeah.
Sorry, notices.
Yeah.
Pursuant to Section 265-10 and the Florida statutes 163.3174,4A, the local planning agency public hearing is not required until the final recommendation, again, final recommendation to the governing body. Today, you are not doing your final recommendation. In this case, the final recommendation does not take until the second hearing of the ordinance, and the recommendation will be presented as a local planning agency resolution before you at the second and final reading of this ordinance. So just to clarify it again, and Ed, if you want to chime in into this issue?
Yes. Specifically, the statute says that the governing body, in cooperation with the local planning agency, may designate any agency, committee, department, or person to prepare the comprehensive plan or plan amendment. But final recommendation of the adoption of such plan or plan amendment to the governing body shall be the responsibility of the local planning agency. And that's, as Claudia just said, you will have to meet as the local planning agency in advance of the second reading--
Understood.
--make a recommendation to yourselves as the City Commission--
Right.
--and adopt on second reading.
And we do that after we get the feedback from the state.
That's correct.
Correct? Because the state may have changes or what have you. Okay, understood.
If I may, Mayor?
How about it, Courtney?
Agree certainly with your director and with your council, that absolutely is what the state law provides. Some jurisdictions have adopted in their ordinances procedures consistent with the state statute. Your code, however, requires that the City Commission, sitting as the local planning agency, shall hold at least one advertised public hearing on a proposed plan amendment to review the amendment and provide recommendations. This meeting shall be noticed in compliance with the notice requirements of the chapter. The City Commission shall hold at least two advertised public hearings on a proposed plan amendment in compliance with Florida statute, Chapter 163. Those meetings shall be noticed in compliance with the notice requirements of the sector. Your code does not provide for this commission to adopt on first reading or start to adopt an ordinance prior to local planning agency consideration.
We are not doing that tonight.
Okay. All right. So we don't agree on that issue, but our experts say that we're proceeding properly. Okay. Claudia?
In terms of the density issues, I want to point to Board Number 3 and to my left, which reads Comprehensive Plan Evaluation Appraisal Report of the year 2016. During that process, and again, we are referring to only the area in red, which is called the mixed-use business land use area, we have the cap and ceiling, as Mrs. Crush explained, that is your ceiling. The ceiling was adopted and approved by the state as 85 units per acre. Therefore, we have the capacity, the current capacity and density, for 85 units per acre in that mixed-use area, land use. Therefore, this is not an increase in density. Again, it's a clarification on how we implement that language within the town center area. In terms of the intensity of the mixed use, which is the square footage, the 2016, again, it is a 2.0. Therefore, yes, we are right now modifying that FAR, which it brings the original intent of the town center area, and that's why we have provided for this amendment a range of 2.5 to 3.5 FAR. This range does not increase, again, the entire town center area, and I want to make that clear, because we are only dealing with one land use area of the town center. Most of the properties within this mixed use are already built. The only properties which are not vacant are probably underdeveloped, are probably the epicure area, the shopping centers, and the gas station and the parking lot. Therefore, those applicable FAR will only be the intent to be in the future in those areas only.
Can I follow up on that?
Yes.
Speaking of the mic, a little bit louder.
I'm so sorry. When I initially started looking at this, to me, and I can understand what would be confusing to other people, because it was to me originally, it's difficult to hear it's not an increase when we're starting at 2.0 and then suddenly we're talking about 2.5 and 3.5. Clearly, one number is greater than the other, right?
Right.
So in a very basic sense, we're looking at bigger numbers. How is that not an increase?
What happened is the initial language that we have in the town center area, it called for the liberal areas, okay? For example, I can provide you an example. In the comprehensive plan, there is an area called for high density, which calls for 80 units per acre. So those areas are confusing whenever you have to analyze, how are you going to interpret that language, okay, when they call it for the more liberal language that it needs to be applied? Certainly, there wasn't a number clear enough, but definitely the intent, it was included in that original comprehensive plan. We went through state changes, state regulations, and statutes that they were modified. In 2007, that issue came light. For example, I can give you an idea. Probably, I wouldn't have suggested that, back then in 2007, it was included in that town center. Probably, you could have done it a ratio. Whenever you are in the town center, you could apply that ratio to increase those intensities and densities. Similar idea that you have in the transfer development rights, because you want to intensify certain areas, you could have incentivized this town center area with a ratio. But the numbers, yes, are greatly different from what it is today in the mixed-use business, but that is interpreting the language in the original comprehensive plan.
I just want to reconfirm what you had stated, that really it just affects the properties on a going-forward basis, basically?
Definitely.
Okay.
Yeah.
That this just affects the properties, the redevelopment of the properties on a going-forward basis.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
We'll get back to that.
Is there any other topic that--
I think that that was--
That was basically--
Yeah, because I think we just wanted to-- Okay. Courtney, did you want to add anything?
Certainly, just to clarify, with respect to 2016, if I was not clear, always been the goal for the town center in your future land use goals and policies to increase. The point I was making is it has never occurred, including in 2016. And again, your consultant, Alex David, in the application to the state in 2016, concluded the density maximum was 50 dwelling units per acre.
Okay.
Thank you.
It hadn't been interpreted that way, but right. But I got it. We're clear. We're clear. Okay.
Yep.
So, yeah. Danny, you want to go?
Dan Katz, RK Centers, 17100 Collins Avenue. Good evening. As previously said, Renan wishes he could have been here, but unfortunately, he wasn't able to attend under the circumstances. I'm going on the record stating that tonight's meeting has nothing to do with amending the comp plan. It has to do with the Infinity Project and nothing else. There's nothing wrong with the current comp plan. You could try to confuse the residents by saying that this is not what you're doing. This is exactly what you're doing, and no one's being fooled. I'm going to follow up on Courtney Crush's factually correct presentation. What we are suggesting is making this easy for all of you and resolving the inconsistencies at the same time. The simple solution is to amend the zoning code to meet the current comp plan. This solves your code issues without adding 1,145 additional residential units and an additional 8,549 hotel rooms. Our solution also solves the population increase of 11,000 residents and hotel guests.
Please turn your phone off. Thank you.
Most importantly, our proposal keeps everything the way it has been all along and relieves everyone's concern that it is the city's intention to change the comp plan so that the Infinity developer can build a taller, a more massive building on the west side of Collins Avenue. Also, it has been suggested by city officials that amending the comp plan would be for our company's benefit. Let me be clear, we never asked for this, even though we would be the largest benefactor. It has also been said that we are fighting this plan to protect our shopping centers. Yes, we are, and I don't see anything wrong with that. If the mayor is fighting to protect the property rights of developers, I'll fight to protect our property rights and the rights of residents to enjoy a greater quality of life. We've seen how the guests at the Marriott Hotel and the Newport Hotel have destroyed our customers' parking at our shopping centers. We're not going to get burned again this time. I'm going on the record now, as a principal of our company, who's the majority landowner in the town center district, that at this point in time, we are adamantly against any comp plan amendment that would increase the density and intensity in the town center district. As you can see, there are many residents here this evening. They are here because they are against an increase in hotel rooms and condo units on the west side of Collins Avenue. All of you ran your campaigns on promising the residents that you will not allow the west side of Collins to look like the east side and turn this into a concrete canyon. How you vote on this topic will affect your future political campaigns. A yes vote by any of you means that you lied to your residents when you campaigned. People will remember this. Mayor Shaw, I recognize that you will not have any future campaigns in our city. All I ask of you is to keep your word on what you told the residents about not allowing the west side of Collins Avenue to look like the east side. Let that be your legacy. I ask all of you to vote no on this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. Okay. The biggest guy in the room, Andrew.
Excuse me, for the record, Andrew Zadar, Representative RK Centers, 17100 Collins Avenue. Good evening, members of the commission and staff and everybody here tonight. I will do my best to follow the mayor's instructions and avoid redundancy in repeating what has been said. I think the biggest thing that we would like to get across as an organization is to the commission, first and foremost, to heed Courtney's warning, listen to what she said, the documentation that we have provided, we believe it is correct. I think what you've heard from Danny as well is that the comp plan amendment isn't the only answer to this. There are other alternatives. We feel that this has been rushed, this has been forced. Based on the number of purple cards that I saw filled out and handed to Mauricio, there will be a number of people that are going to come up here and scream and yell about traffic and density. The residents, the people that vote in this city, it's very important to them, so we feel that running into this and voting yes to approve an amendment is frankly irresponsible. To quote my good friend Rabbi Baron, how he opened this evening, you know, the decisions that are made here tonight by this commission will greatly impact the future of this city. The people on this dais obviously have that ability, you've been voted to make those decisions. You are going to hear from a number of residents in addition to us and our expert opinions, that hopefully you will heed their warning and our warning, and we ask that you vote no on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay. Ben?
Good evening, City Commissioners, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Attorney, the Clerk. I'm not going to touch on the--
Name an address to the record.
Sorry?
Name an address to the record.
Oh, Benjamin Brodsky, 200 Southeast First Street, Suite 400, Miami, Florida. I'm not going to touch on the substantive aspects of the plan. Ms. Crush handled that. I won't discuss the political impact of this and the thousand signatures that my client, RK Centers, has received in opposition to this plan. What I'm here to discuss today are my grave due process concerns on behalf of RK Centers and the residents and businesses of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, and our desire to vindicate the transparency requirements of the Florida Sunshine Act. I believe that this vote, if it is taken today, is unlawful and violative of Florida statutes and the city code. I believe I heard the city planner mention that it's only a final recommendation that requires a proceeding, meeting by the local planning agency. In fact, that is not correct, and I would urge the city attorney to please clarify that to the commission. Any recommendation that's made, including the one today, must be preceded by a local planning agency meeting. That has not happened here. The commission is walking into a due process minefield. I would further add, and I will just note, the Commissioner Viscara's confusion about exactly what we're discussing today is the root of the problem with the notice as drafted. We just don't know, as a city resident or a city business, before we came in today, what exactly was being proposed, and that is a major problem, because the notice requirements for these kind of votes are so strictly construed by the courts, because the residents have the right to know what is going to happen in their city, and they're being completely whitewashed. It's being rushed through without the required notice so that, as many people are here today standing up to say they don't want this, so many more would have been here had the proper notice been provided. Now, my client has filed a lawsuit this afternoon. We have named the commissioners in their official capacity as we must to get the declaratory relief that we will seek and we will receive. This is not complying with Florida law or the city code. It's not even close. And so I would urge you, moot this lawsuit, do the right thing, give the city residents and the businesses the opportunity to be heard, make a constructive political process out of this so that the appropriate stakeholders may have their voices heard, such that we can avoid an expensive and drawn-out fight with discovery and depositions and all of that entails. Again, I would urge the commission, vote no. In fact, I don't even believe that they have the legal authority to consider it today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ben. Okay. So I think we've heard from RK's side, and so we've got, I'm going to open the public hearing. I've got a lot of public speaker cards. So, and so what I would just, again, what I would ask everyone is, if you could just please, if, you know, if somebody's said something already, still, you get up, you're going to state your name and your address for the record, and then, but if somebody's, but if you're saying what somebody's already said, you just say, "I agree," or "I oppose," however you want to state it, and then we can move it along, because otherwise, we'll be here till about 2:00 in the morning. But that's okay, if that's what it takes. So I'm going to open the public hearing, and then, again, if you're going to speak, you have three minutes by rule. Igor Vasilev. Igor?
Is he in the other room?
Igor? He might be outside? Okay. Okay, so if I've called your name and you're in the other room, just go to the front door and tell the officer to let you in, and then I'm going to put your card aside, and then when you enter the room, you know, you'll be next, after the current speaker. So I'm going to, so if Igor's here, I'm going to set it aside. Okay. Silvana Zerulinskaf? Silvana? Okay. It looks like Silvana. No? Okay, I'm 0-for-2. Steven Wainick? Steven? Steven? Wow, they had to be in the room to fill out the card, okay. Nancy Brier?
She's coming.
She's coming? Okay. Very good. We got one. I'm feeling good. Okay.
There's two, he says.
Okay, we got two? Eddie? We got two? Okay, we're going to wait a minute, let them in then, so. Dan? Dan, I've got one for you, can I consider you have already spoken? Okay, thank you. Mitch Cutler, same thing, I got one for Mitch, I got one for Andrew as well. Okay, we, okay, I've got Nancy Brier, I've got Igor Vasilev, Silvana, okay, Steven Wenick. Igor?
Yes.
Thank you, Igor. Okay, if you can state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Igor Vasilev. 16909 North Bay Road, Apartment 301, Sunny Isles. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I oppose to the amendments that are being proposed today for a number of reasons. First of all, it's been mentioned here before, it's density and intensity, traffic, as the studies been done to address traffic issues. The intersection of Collins and Sunny Isles Boulevard is the busiest intersection in town, and most of the times it's during the rush hours, there's a parking lot. And school, we don't have enough room in the school, it's up to a capacity, it's overcrowded. We can't afford any more residents and children to add to number of kids in school. Also, a capacity of water and sewer infrastructure, has that been addressed before we even considered these amendments? But that's, I have another big concern and big issue I wanted to address. I talked to a lot of people, a lot of my friends and my neighbors, and I cannot name you a single person who would be for these amendments, everybody's against that, and you see how many people are here today, residents of Sunny Isles, and I encourage you, Mayor and the Commissioners, to vote no on this. Well, here's the, here's the problem. We have a lot of good projects, a lot of good projects been done in the city, to name a few, you know, you can look at the bridge and many other ones, and these are the good examples when the interest of the developers and the interest of the citizens of Sunny Isles converge, and it's great. When that happens, everybody's happy and we have a good project. But today, it's clearly not the case. It's too much, it's premature, it's a lot of homework that has not been done, and when these interests do not converge, the, you, the Commissioners, the ones who we voted for, have to be on our side, and it's not, it's not a choice, it's not an option, you are here to protect our interests, to look out for our best interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Igor. Thank you. Okay. Silvana, is there anybody else in the back that came in? No? Blake? I've got Steven Wenick? No? Okay. Nancy Brier? No, Nancy? No? Okay. Teresa Cathay? Teresa? Okay, I'm striking out here, I'm going to put them aside just in case they're in the other room. Okay, Kevin? Is it McLaughlin? Kevin Laughlin? Okay. I know this one's in the room, Norman Ettelcup. I got one. Okay. There we go, Norman. There we go. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and I think you finally pulled me out of retirement.
There you go.
I think this is the first time I've been speaking on an issue in this city since I retired from office. But let me start by saying my name is Norman Ettelcup, I live at 244 Atlantic Isle, I've been a resident of the city for over 50 years, and I was very fortunate to be one of the original incorporators of the city and probably have one of the few remaining people that served on the original planning committee for the comprehensive plan along with the current mayor's wife who served on that. And so, you know, I've had the opportunity to not only be involved in the city before my election, but also after, and in 2001, I was elected to this commission and I served as mayor from 2003 to 2014, 11 years. And with all that, I think I need to look at some of my notes probably. One of the things that I always promised, whether I was on the planning board or as a commissioner or as the mayor of the city at the time, that in exchange for developing the east side of our city, we would make a deal with the public basically that said the west side would stay less dense and low-rise and avoid anything that would look like a concrete canyon. In exchange for that, we were getting the cooperation of the people that lived in the city at the time to go along with the high-rise development that did occur on the east side and made us a great and wonderful city. I think that we need to keep that promise of the low development on the west side. First of all, on one of the other issues, I'm here not to blame anyone or make any excuses about a mistake that was made, but if you go back to what this whole thing is about, it's about a comprehensive plan that was approved back in 2000 and then the 2004 attempt by our city commission to increase the zoning, which the state disapproved. Complicating that, they sent it back in 2007 hoping that the city would act on this. Unfortunately, the city, for whatever reasons, the administration of the city did not act on it. I remember even getting the letter from the state at the time in 2007 and walking it into John Zerlik's office who was then city manager and saying, you know, "This is something that, you know, you're going to have to handle with staff." Whatever the case may be, maybe it was the recession and maybe it was the fact that there were other things going on in the city, but there was really no development going on at the moment of time that forces to have to address this issue, and somehow it got forgotten, it got put aside. And what happened afterwards unfortunately was we approved some projects based on the fact that our staff inadvertently gave us misinformation. So we were left now with a situation where we have some buildings that have been built that meet the zoning that we had passed but do not meet the comprehensive plan that the state mandated for us. I think one of the problems that we're having is that we don't want to compound the problem, we want to fix the problem the best way we can, and in my view, I think you're going around, probably doing this backwards. You know, I think the comprehensive plan approved by the state is the superior document, and the minority document really is what we do here in the city with our zoning laws. And if there is a conflict between the two, it's our job to make our zoning laws comply with the state mandated comprehensive plan. What I'm hearing now is just the opposite of that, that we're trying to change our zoning and comprehensive plan from the 50 units that we all approved at the very beginning for the non-waterfront properties and which we all thought we were staying with, but unfortunately we didn't in some of our approvals. And now that 50 units of non-waterfront property have been suggested to grow to some 85 units in some cases, which is giving heartache, I think, to most of the residents of the city and most of us that have promised to keep the west side development low. So where we left, I think the Commission really should go back and look at how it can address this problem by leaving the comp plan as approved by the state back in the 2000 era, which is where we all thought we were going to be even today, and start from there. I'm against the idea of, you know, having the inconsistency going the other way because it doesn't really make sense to me and it's breaking the promise that we all made, all of us, including myself, the Commissioners that served with me, and this Commission up here. I think that's why we have so many people here tonight complaining that we're breaking our promise. I certainly don't want to be responsible for breaking a promise, I don't think you want to be responsible for breaking a promise, and I think there are ways to avoid us having a confrontational approach to this thing. Lastly, you know, I think we really need to maintain our pledge to the people that we will not have a concrete canyon, we will not overdevelop the west side of this city, and I urge you all, please keep the promise and save our city. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Norman. Thank you, Norman. Emma Levin?
My name is Emma Levin, to have it Sunny Isles Boulevard, Apartment 1004, Sunny Isles Beach. I'm absolutely against of massive building builder on the west side. It's a low down, it will bring our all properties values down, as more buildings are on Sunny Isles is less their cost, and you all have to know it. If you don't live on the west and east side, live on your isles and can't build more, you're absolutely fine, but what you're doing, right now, market went down with economy or with not economy, but as more you're building, as less all our apartments values, and this is extremely important because, you know, some people put their less money or they retired people, they came here for the, for paradise, and what we're dealing is constant construction, constant traffic, I'm living on Sunny Isles Boulevard, it's sometimes I take in for me 10, 15 minutes just to get out from the house because it's a parking lot, and you planning to build something across the street with, and it's one line Boulevard, one side, it's, you know, one-way streets, what are you going to do? You're going to kill us all, we have to move out from Sunny Isles? What's your plans, how you can plan it without cleaning? This is my statement, we're absolutely against it, all my buildings.
Thank you. Okay, Jean Levin? Jean? Jean Levin? Is that, any relation? I have an M11 and then a Jean Levin.
No.
No?
Jean Levin, no.
Okay. Okay. Okay, is it, do we have Teresa here? Do we have a Teresa or, no? We have Teresa Cathay? No?
Teresa.
Okay, so, okay. Leonoid Sharonon? Leo? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. You made it easy. Anna Shafrenov?
Yeah, the same, I agree with her.
Thank you, Anna. Alexander Zalatuski? I'm terrible with the Russian last names, sorry, so.
Alexander Zalatuski, 16699, Collins Avenue, Unit 2506. I agree with everything that people say and just want to add, the quality of our life under siege today, that's it.
Thank you, Alexander. Thank you. Okay, Ella? Ella Kalish?
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. I've been a long-term resident...
Ella, name and address to the record.
My name is Ella Kalish, I live at 251 174th Street, Winston Towers 200. I've been a resident for 25 years before there was anything built on the east side of the street. I have watched my view from, of the ocean, and I live in a penthouse apartment, completely be taken over. I don't even see the ocean unless I kind of lean over the edge. If I go to the beach after 1:00 in the afternoon, I do not get sun consistently lying in one place anymore. I, I have friends that used to come visit me that refused to come to Sunny Isles Beach. I have to meet them in Aventura or Bell Harbor or down in South Beach because of the congestion. If I want, if I want a view, I'm going to have to go to the mayor's house and have brunch so I can see the intercoastal. You know, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, you live with your back to the city, and I feel like the Commissioners and the mayor, by allowing increased density, intensity, and height, you're going to take what's left of our views away from us on the west side of the street. So you're turning your back to the city and the residents that voted you in on your promise to protect us and our investments. I'm an older woman now, I was probably one of the youngest when I first moved and invested in this city. The value investment that I've put into my apartment over 25 years, it will decline if you bring additional inventory into our city. If you bring rentals into this city, my ability to rent my apartment as I get older is going to be less money than I'm going to earn. If we have a downturn in the economy, and we will have a downturn in the economy, we're going to have a fire sale, so what I will even get out of my apartment if I'm forced to sell it in order to pay for my retirement, whatever that's going to look like, will be infringed upon by the additional building that you're planning here in this city. It is unfair for you not to consider us, as we considered you carefully when we voted you in to protect us, not the developers. I don't blame the developers, this is what they do for a living, they're animals. It's up to you to say, "No, we have had enough."
Yeah, let Ella finish. Thank you, Ella.
So I implore you, additionally to that, I wanted to mention that one of the first rentals that was allowed to be built in our city, you know, around the curve behind, you'll help me out.
King David.
Pardon me?
King David. Was it, no, King David was a condo, Joe?
No, no. The first one right off 163rd Street, when you go around the curve behind...
The first one.
Okay.
Okay, anyway.
It was the first rentals that were allowed to be built. As soon as they were built, not shortly thereafter, they were allowed to become condominiums. Now, the builders of this, these new rentals that they want to build and compete with us and take what's views are left of us looking, and don't forget, everybody on the west side were the ones that voted you guys in. We don't live in those big condos, those people that bought those condos don't live in those big condos. So, you know, what I'm, what I also am terribly afraid of is when they build, they build those apartments, not far after, they, those developers will get ability to turn those into condominiums so they can make their money and walk away. You need to protect us, you need to give us the quality of life we voted you in to give us. I implore you, do not allow high builds on the west side. I don't mind, you know, short buildings, of course, that, you know, where it's needed, but with Deezur's planning for that 172nd Street is unacceptable, so please protect us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ella. Thank you. Warren Stam? Warren? I don't see you out there. Where are you? Warren? Okay, if Warren's in the other room, he can come around. Nanelle? Oof, I can't. Where's Larissa? Sorry.
Nanelle Mizoborskaya. Nella? Nella? No?
Okay, here, you can do that one as well.
Rumi? It's you. Rumi?
Rooney, okay.
That was easy, I know her short name.
Okay, that's the short name? Thank you. Rooney?
Yes, it's a short name.
Rooneyanna? Right.
My name is Romiana Gudzadova, I live on 186 to 20.
I live on 186 to 20 Sunny Isles. I see many things I love to hear, but I was before talking with the mayor, when was the public's not satisfaction because the gas station was not able to be sold. Now, the west side was promised, I love the previous mayor, he promised what? He promised and keep it, like we vote for you, yes. Nothing to be built on the west side. I want to ask question, on Collins Avenue and 186th Street, the spa empty, you bought it from somebody who wants to build 18 floor business building. What's going on in this place? Now it's quiet because you rented, because for the construction, they pay you. What is gonna be on the other side, where is Navarro on the right side? What is gonna be built over there? Like everybody think, nothing high race on the west side. That's why we're here for a long time, and that is the beauty. What if, let me tell you, Porsche, if I am living in this building, I will complain, I will take you to court. The next building, how you put next to my window? Trust me, this is insane. How they can build now the Porsche, beautiful. How, when you come from 163rd on Collins? Do you see Porsche? No? You see this, the ugly building I ever see? And it's up to the Collins. How, who give permission? Who give permission to be on this place, not even to the beach and too close? Trust me, I'm glad I'm not in this building. I feel sorry for these people, because if I am, I will take you to court. This is nobody think for the people. Okay, we gonna sell, we gonna build, how the people feels? I cannot understand building next to building like wall. And the lady's right, after 1 PM, no sun, what is going on? Now, you, you take, yes, some places, yes. You take the east side, no beach, no sun, nothing. This side, we are happy, we have everything, we have a restaurant and everything, spa, what, whatever you want, dry cleaning, everything, CVS, everything. We are happy. And we don't want high race on the west side. And I beg you to keep the promise, because when we vote for you, that was the promise, no more west side high race. I'm sorry, I'm not fluent English. And I just have to say what I'm thinking, because what is going on with this, what is gonna be on this corner? I'm going to watch, because these people, how many cars going on Collins? And the school, I spoke with you about the school, how many kids from outside coming to this school? You told me you cannot control. No, you can. You are the mayor, you can speak with them. You can say something, not because you cannot control. I tell about the door of the publics, that was the wrong things. You put the public entrance on the back, where is the school? Now, I heard about Marina in the back, that's true? That is a rumor or true is going on?
Well, I don't know yet, yeah, we don't know what they're gonna build there yet.
That's another things, you see? One street going to publics, going to school, going to Marina, what is going on? Why you don't make a golf course in the back, instead to put, instead to put Marina? Marina they have. Why Marina? For money?
Shh, 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 please.
No, something, I'm sorry, I'm very aggressive, but that really make me very upset. And the empty spot next to our street on the corner of Collins, I'm going to watch what you're gonna do.
Good, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Henry, Stephanie? Oh Warren, okay, you're up. Good to see you Warren.
Good evening Mayor, Commissioners, staff, and fellow residents of Sunny Isles Beach, for the record. My name is Warren Stam, and I'm a longtime resident of Sunny Isles Beach, and I reside at 16001 Collins Avenue. And I'm here this evening in opposition to the proposed zoning ordinance. The first question that I asked myself was, what is the mayor and commission trying to do? Second question I asked myself was why. Well, let's address the what first. We're here this evening on something that really does not necessarily need to be fixed. As you've heard, I'm talking to the community as a whole here, the mayor and commissioner seeking to amend the city's comprehensive plan to allow for an increase in intensity and density to those properties which are within the mixed-use business land designation which is called the town center. Sounds very fancy, but for the benefit of my fellow residents, you've heard about intensity, you've heard about density, and you've heard about modifications to FAR, you've heard about DU dwelling unit calculations from 60 to 85 units. This all sounds very important, but when the dust settles, what does it mean? It means to us who reside in this, and visit the city of Sunny Isles Beach, is more development in an area that can no longer sustain this type of increase. So that leads me to the second question, why? Why would this mayor and commission seek to make this change and potentially allow for additionally hundreds of thousands of square feet of development? Why would this mayor and this commission want to add additional traffic and gridlock to a city that's already stressed and congested? Why would this mayor and commission, who ran on election promises of restricted and measured growth and no high-rise development on the west side, now be seeking to severely impact the quality of life of the residents of Sunny Isles Beach? Do you not sit in the bumper-to-bumper traffic and endure a 45-minute commute to go north-south from the Lehman Causeway to the south end of the city? Do you not have to sit on the 163rd Street Bridge, trying to go west-east for another 45 minutes behind multiple cars and trucks with boat trailers seeking to turn right on Collins Avenue each and every weekend? Do you not have to routinely drive around and search for parking spaces to frequent businesses in our city? Do you not have to try to walk Collins Avenue, paying more attention to not getting hit by cars turning in and out of high-rise after high-rise, instead being able to look at the ocean? Which by the way, is only two places from 158th Street to 192nd where you can actually see the ocean. That's the pier and Sampson Park. So what does that tell you? What this commission is trying to do is contrary to what the town center's district and this city's comprehensive was originally created to do. This is Calvin Giordano and Associates report, which I believe is what you guys are relying on here. And just taking a look to what in 2004 this comprehensive plan was supposed to do. It was supposed to have a strong emphasis on pedestrian circulation space and systems with minimal vehicular conflicts and human scaled amenities. It was supposed to create central public spaces and plazas that accommodate active public programming and events for residents and visitors. It was supposed to provide direct access and exposure to waterfront amenities. Then it was amended, there were two other policies that were added. One was supposed to enhance the quality of the built environment and provide additional opportunities to live, workshop, and play in the city. And then there was Policy 1E, which is one of my favorites. To foster and promote the community-wide appeal and relevance of the town center to residents and visitors, support should be provided to redevelopment that incorporates a live-work-play orientation of uses that create a focal point of activity for a diverse range of age groups, economic levels, and cultural interests. Well, I gotta tell you, I've lived in this city for a long time, I don't see it. So, let's get down and remind ourselves of what we were supposed to do. So I ask you, I ask this mayor and commission now, do you really think that adding a project that's seeking to put an additional 120 residential units, 220 hotel units, 738 parking spaces on a two-acre site at the corner of the most congested intersection in the city of Sunny Isles Beach is worth modifying an entire comprehensive plan that's been working for this city? You heard Mayor Edelcup get up here, you heard Dan Katz, you heard others. This is not a total overhaul, this is an adjustment, this is a correction. Well, let me tell you something, I don't believe that this change is in order, and I don't believe, nor do the residents, business owners, or visitors of Sunny Isles Beach think so either. We're here this evening on the first reading of a proposed ordinance, let's make it the last reading. Thank you.
Stephanie Henry?
Mayor, I represent Sands Point's condominium.
Hans, Hans.
They represent, I'm attorney for Sands Point.
Okay.
I wanna get at least my comments with respect to my client.
Mr. Mayor.
They've been sitting here for a while.
Okay, hold on, Hans, hold on, please.
Sure.
Mr. City Attorney.
Well, he told me before, I just wanna add, I do have a written legal opinion-
Yeah.
-from the Ethics Commission that allowed me to speak.
Just so the public understands what's going on is-
Let me first-
No, I have the floor Hans.
I was talking.
Hans, it's my meeting, it's not your meeting Hans, it's my meeting, okay? So what's going on here is, Hans used to work at the city, okay? So when he left the city in January, there's a state law that says he can't come before this body and lobby for two years.
It's not a state law, it's a county law.
It's a county ethics law, and it follows the state, okay? So basically, there is a, there's a, there's an argument that's, there's an exemption that says if it's a 501(c)(3), okay, then he could represent a 501(c)(3). So Hans is trying to work his way around that by saying, I'm representing Sands Point condominium association.
Let me speak to the people.
Hans, I got nothing to hide Hans, I just don't want you-
You want me to speak?
Hans, the bottom line is-
You want me to speak?
Hans, you're risking your own violation.
I'm gonna let my client read my speech.
That's fine, that would be, that's fine. Thank you Hans. He can't. That'll be great Hans. Maggie, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. You are going to have to excuse me because even though I'm very good at speaking one-to-one, I never spoken in this-
That's okay, Maggie, pull the mic a little closer, and then just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Maggie Gordo, and I am the president of Sands Point, and I love this city with all my heart. I have tried to comply with every law and have all of my residents do the same. I love this city, and when I first heard of the Infinity Project a year ago, I was flabbergasted because it came from the developer. And he came to me and said, I was sent here by this city to tell you that we are going to put a bridge on the entrance, and you either take it or they're gonna do eminent domain. Well, obviously, he didn't know who he was talking to. I immediately let him, told him, you won't do such a thing, and there's the door. So I immediately contacted the mayor, who was very gracious, sent Mr. Russo and Claudia to my building, and explained to me that, no, against key was all over the place, he didn't have investors, I didn't have to worry about this at all. Well, not believing, because I like to verify, I went to see the mayor in his office, and when I got there, both Russo and, Mr. Russo and Claudia were there too. So they told me pretty much the same thing, except that the mayor told me, don't worry about it Maggie, if anything happens, I'll let you know. Well, everything happened, and he didn't let me know. I found out the 10th of December that he was going forth with this unlawful bridge. It was an unlawful bridge, just like this amendment is an op soni. You're being misled, and I have a problem when people mislead. Call a spade a spade, for example, the zoning director stands here and tells you that in 2004, they did this town plan, and in 2007, there was, the state told them, you know, you need to look and keep. Let me say this to you, the town, the comprehensive plan has never been changed, because when the comprehensive plan was done and the city tried to amend it in 2007, that letter that has been characterized here by the zoning director as a suggestion was not such a thing. It was a clear indication that it was not complying with the law, and the city was told to fix it, or present the data. Well, what did the city do? The city represented to the state that in fact, they were going to read it, eliminate, delete the increase. So here we have, they're telling you they need to do the comprehensive like the 2004. Well, they're consistent, the problem is the so-called interpretation. It wasn't a misinterpretation, it was a mistake between 2004 to 2007. But after that, after they were told by the state to change it, and they didn't change it, it became then at that point, in my view, intentional. Is it negligence? I don't know. It's certainly wrongdoing, because if I tell the state that I'm gonna do something, I'm gonna do it. You didn't do it, as a city, and now you not only are looking to give us more op zoning, and yes, Ms. Claudia has borne, it is an op zoning. When you have a zoning code that was a 2.0, and now you are modifying, clarifying, reconciling, I mean, I didn't, I was going around trying to talk to different persons, I met with the mayor on June the 5th, he said, Maggie, I'm not, I'm not going to fix the comprehensive plan. I said, why not? If that was wrong? Because I didn't know what he meant. I know something needed fixed, but I didn't understand. And he said, no, I'm not gonna fix it, it's not necessary, it's a minor flaw, but don't worry about it. And then later, he's in, I see the zoning notice, and I said, what is being amended? You read that, he says, this is an amending. Okay, so-
I just wanted to know for the record, Mr. Attorney, my client has a due process right to have attorney represent her condo tonight, since-
She has one.
Since I don't wanna get in argument with you or the mayor, I'm gonna let my son, in fact, his name is Hans Jr., read the statement.
He's not been called. He's not been called. Let him, I don't, let him, you know, let him speak, it's fine. Okay, he's speaking, okay? No verbal outbursts, thank you. Hans, go ahead.
Put on the spot right here, as you heard, I'm Hans Ottenat Jr., here reading a statement. My name is Hans Ottenat, with the law firm of Ottenat Law, P.A., address 17524 Northwest 61st Court, Miami, Florida. I'm here tonight as pro bono counsel for the Sands Point condominium and more than 500 residents who live in the condo. As a matter of full disclosure, I'm here, I am the former city attorney of the Sunny of the city of Sunny Isles Beach, and now in council with RK Centers, also known as Renan Katz. Mr. Katz encourages me with limitations to perform pro bono services in this community. There has been a lot of comments made why the city commission should say no to this proposal to increase residential and hotel units on the west side of Collins Avenue. I'm not here to talk about the law- I'm not here to talk about the law. I am here to talk about the vision the founding fathers and the mothers had about development on the west side of the city, the west side of Collins Avenue. We heard the word comprehension plan a lot tonight. Truthfully, most people do not know what is a comprehensive plan. Well, I did not know what a comprehensive plan was also until I started working for the city in the year 2000, when the city's comprehensive plan was created. A comprehensive plan is your constitution, as it relates to the development of the land in the city. It tells you how big or how small a building can be, it tells you at times how tall a building can be. And any law that is passed after the adoption of a comprehensive plan must be consistent with, it's like the U.S. Constitution. For example, the U.S. Constitution gives you the right of free speech, the right, the right the resident or express exercises now, the right the residents here exercises now. Because of this right, City of Sunny Isles Beach cannot pass a law to take away that right. The United States Constitution has survived more than 200 years for a number of reasons. One of the most important reasons was the robust discussion that took place between our founding fathers that created this document. Similar to the cities of Sunny Isles Beach, comprehensive plan has lasted mostly intact for almost 20 years. The main reason in this process is to adopt the comprehensive plan provided for the robust discussion between residents, property owners, elected officials, and the stakeholders and developers.
Okay.
There were numerous workshops, public meetings, and one of the meetings, residents, there were town, there were town hall meetings, Mayor Scholl, my apologies, you were here. Chris Russo, you were there. Mayor Edelcup, you were there. I believe some members in the audience was there. I was there. From this robust discussion and community meetings, a vision in the comprehensive plan was achieved where the developers were given the east side and the west side will stay with the people. The vision for the west side of Collins Avenue was green space and small buildings. In the early years, after adoption of the comprehensive plan, this vision forced the city commission to make a developing, give up a large piece of property on the west side of Collins Avenue to create a park. That park is called the Town Center Park, where families, young mothers, young adults, and elderly residents enjoy a great quality life. The Town Center Park and numerous parks on the west side of Collins Avenue are the legacies of the prior city commissions. Robust discussions in the planned amendment process because you will hear the residents truly want, what the residents truly want. This commission did that in 2016, when the comprehension plan was last amended. There were numerous workshops and town hall meetings. It is important from these meetings and workshops that the vision that the residents had about the west side of Collins did not change, the green space and small buildings. Vote no.
Okay, yeah, okay, I think we got enough. So I think we get it. Again, I think we're, I think the points are well made. Thanks, Hans. So, thank you, Maggie. Stephanie Henry?
My name is Stephanie Henry, 16950 North Bay Road, apartment 2502 Sunny Isles Beach. My family and I are long-term residents of Sunny Isles well over 15 years. Whether one is a seasonal or a full-time resident, all of our concerns should be valued and weighed. There are two pressing questions this evening. What is best for our city? And secondly, who or what entity will reap the most rewards for passing this measure in front of us? Our city is a first-class community, a happy place, synonymous with excellence, safety, luxury, and much more. However, adopting this measure will create a doomed scenario, a scenario where our dear city will be stretched to its limits. Translation: overdeveloped. Overdevelopment is almost, is practically a straight line to unsustainability. Unsustainability will for sure result in vacant spaces, residential and commercial, ultimately and unfortunately, driving down our property values. It's never encouraged to use your resources to its maximum. Rezoning in this particular matter, in this particular manner, will do exactly that to our city. Keep in mind, there are at least five current construction sites well underway, and our city has yet to absorb those new neighbors. The irresponsible developers present a quote-unquote "promising" project, but they're not concerned with, nor deterred by, the negative impact their development will have on our city, on our infrastructure, and possibly even environmentally. I don't know. We do not want Sunny Isles Beach to be on the map in the same way as Brickell and other highly-trafficked areas are. Maintaining our quality of life is what's at stake. Surely, that does not mean that there's not room to grow, but it does mean that we should proceed forward in a conservative, cautious, and conscientious way. We can all agree, we do have leverage in attracting families and investors and businesses to our community because we are current and we are relevant. Greed, on the other hand, will certainly make us lose that leverage, and we absolutely do not want that. Let us not be avaricious. We can do better. We are imploring the commission to simply vote no. I will close on this note. If our elected officials who promised to control density on the west side, if you all were genuinely and sincerely concerned with the desires and needs of our community, we would be here tonight resolving the overcrowdedness at our local school and looking to build a high school. Those are the things our community needs.
Thank you. Jerry Joseph. Jerry, you still here? There you are.
Hello, my name is Jerry Joseph. I live at 18560 North Bay Road. I have firsthand knowledge of the overcrowding at the Edelcup School, and I believe that this future development will only increase that overcrowding even further. We have many parks in this city, but they're child geared parks. There are no adult or adolescent geared parks. We have no tennis courts. We have cities around us, Surfside, Aventura, that have many tennis courts for the residents, public tennis courts. I think the property that in question could be used to a much better, for a much better purpose than what we're considering tonight.
Thank you, Jerry.
We also, let me just say that Sunny Isles currently does have a nickname, which is unfortunately Shady Isles, and I would hope to not just make that even more of a joke for surrounding cities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Okay. Teresa Lewis? Teresa Lewis?
Yes.
There we are. All right, we're getting a better hit rate now. Feel better.
Hello, my name is Teresa Lewis, and my husband and I live at Oceania Tower 5, 1650 Collins Avenue. We've been here since 1991. First in Tower 3, and then we moved over to Tower 5, so I think you could say that we've been here almost from the very beginning of Sunny Isles. And yes, we were thankful when we saw the little tacky motels go down, I wanna say that, and it was transformed into beautiful condo buildings. But now, I wanna direct my comments to Mayor Scholls. Mr. Mayor, if you remember, on Tuesday, October 21st, 2014, you invited the residents of all the Oceania Towers over to our club for a light dinner and to meet you as you were running for mayor. On that night, you promised that if we voted for you, that you would promise, you promised to protect the west side of Collins Avenue from overconstruction. Well, yes, we voted for you on November 4th, 2014, and we were happy when you won. But today, Mr. Mayor, we realize that you were not really honest with us. I don't know, maybe just wanted to get elected. But we all know that, and we all know that any vacant piece of property on the ocean is gonna have a condo on it. We've also seen many structures go up on the west side of Collins Avenue, but the development that you're planning now is completely unacceptable for this small city. I just wanna, very quickly, I have an email from you, which was very nice, but what it said was, thanking me for the vote, you said, "You, the voters, heard my message about limiting west-side development and taking care of our senior citizens with a new community center. Now, I pledge to work with the rest of the city commission to make those promises a reality." And I wanna publicly thank you, everyone that supported my campaign. But unfortunately, you seem to have forgotten that promise that you made.
Let her finish, let her finish, please.
I just wanna say, I understand that the Infinity Project cannot be approved under the current land law use, and that you're wishing to change the law, which is contrary to the vision and the founding members of the City of Sunny Isles Beach. All of us residents would like to thank Mayor Norman Edelcup
Yep.
for this land law use. We do not want to live in a condo canyon, and we do not want that law changed. So your vision is not what the citizens of Sunny Isles Beach want. We can barely drive, everybody knows, we can barely drive in our city now, as there's too much traffic, our friends and guests, which someone else just commented on, they don't wanna come into our city even to visit us. They say, "Well, you'll have to come and see us. We're not coming into Sunny Isles Beach." So we implore you to stop this development, and please understand that the citizens of Sunny Isles Beach have had enough inconvenience without you adding more. And just one more question for the mayor, and I'll sit down. Perhaps you could explain to the residents exactly what the benefit would be to our city for this huge development besides more tax revenue? And I'll let you answer.
Yeah. What I'm gonna do is, when we're done, I'm gonna speak to the issues, and then I'll go through it then.
Very good.
But appreciate your comments. Thank you, thank you. Barbara Garcia? Barbara? Barbara Garcia? There she is.
I'm Barbara Garcia, live at 17700 North Bay Road, number 808. We've been owners in Sunny Isles since 2000, and full-time residents since 2007. I just, I'm gonna be really brief. I just wanna mention two things that I haven't heard anybody else say. This is a, we live in a hurricane area, and before I got here this evening, I thought it was an additional, I read an article saying it was gonna be an additional 6,000 hotel rooms and an additional 1,000 residential units. After I got here, everybody's saying it's more than 1,000 residential units, and speaking about over 8,000 hotel rooms additional. Hurricane season is like smack in the middle of our high season. How are we gonna get 8,000 more hotel rooms and over 1,000 more residential units evacuated in the middle of a hurricane? I was here for the last one. It wasn't fun. The other thing I wanted to mention was, we had a deadly shooting in May, and it happened because it was outsiders, people who come here to stay here. And now we're gonna add 8,000 more opportunities for outsiders to come here. It was a deadly shooting. I don't think it's a good idea. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Greg Grossman? Greg?
Greg Grossman, 1646 South Bay Shore Drive. I'm here on behalf of Sands Point. Good evening, Commissioners, City Managers, Zoning Director, and City Attorney. My name is Greg Grossman. I have been asked to make this statement on behalf of Sands Point Ocean Beach Condominium Association, Inc. The residents of Sands Point and all the residents of Sunny Isles Beach voted for their city representatives with the belief that they would be true to the laws and ideas of the city. We look to each of you to uphold the city's procedural rules and the city's comprehensive plan, along with all applicable statutes, ordinances, and rules. The residents of Sands Point demand this body follow procedural requirements. The notice for this hearing does not follow the procedural requirements and does not conform with Florida statutes, Chapter 163rd, or Section 265.10 of the City Code of Ordinances. Where is the clear description of the proposed amendment to the City of Sunny Isles comprehensive plan? When were the public hearings? These are just two examples. I am not going to cite each and every defect in the notice when it has been fully documented in the report prepared by Ms. Ward, President of JC Consultant Enterprises, Inc., which each of you should have received and hopefully will read if you've not already. Let's take a moment and talk about the city comprehensive plan. The residents of Sands Point are pleading to you to save their beloved city from upzoning. Each of you must understand that if you vote to amend the comprehensive plan, you are voting to upzone the city going forward. This is a fact. Each of you have campaigned against this. Do not rely on false choices provided by city staff and/or the mayor. If they tell you this is not an upzone, look for yourself. Read the report prepared by Ms. Ward. Keep your campaign promises. Uphold the city comprehensive plan and follow the law. Vote no. At this time, I'd like to submit a copy of this statement and a petition in opposition signed by 263 residents for the record.
Thank you. Lumi? Lumi Sava? Lumi, you here? Where's Lumi? Lumi, there she is. Lumi, pull the mic down in front of you. Thank you.
But, Commissioners, my name is Lumi Sava. I'm a resident at 18671 Collins Avenue, apartment 2503, Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, 33160. Unfortunately, I voted for all of you, and I'm very disappointed. I'm here...
Come on, folks.
I'm here because I came here 20 years ago, and it was paradise, and I was very happy. But in time, the paradise converted to inferno, to hell. And this is all due to all of you and to the abuses that you are doing. You are supposed to represent the residents, not the developers, and every action you have taken is helping the developers who are coming from the outside. Somebody said Shady Isles, I heard something else, Landrum out for drug money. That's what this is happening. That's where the money is being poured. But every time I came to these meetings to oppose and to ask, "Why are you asking and allowing all this incredible development?" Any businesses in this world, before they get into a business, they do a market analysis to find out what is the demand? And if there is a demand, how can you accommodate it? The second one is, what is the condition of the present infrastructure and how much more expansion it can support? Have you done such a study? Have you provided it to anybody? I haven't seen anything like that. The third one, the analysis of the occupancy sold or ready-built apartments. I know that the Porsche, which we call the crematorium has 45 foreclosures. Thirty-two apartments for sale, 23 for rent. The apartment is, the building is basically vacant. I see the north side of the building and it may be no more than 10 apartments are occupied at any time, so let's say for the whole building, 20. But, it's being rented to loud, noisy, ugly people who have parties, who bring DJs, who dance naked on the balcony and do not allow us to enjoy ourselves. I have to call the police and I've done so to put a stop to that. So, where is the quality of our life going? The next one, what is the analysis of how many apartments are pre-sold in the buildings in progress? Are we building just concrete towers that we see vacant and the wind is going to blow them through while our apartments that are occupied by legal occupants, the value is going down? How much more do you need? How much more occupancy is necessary for this building? You are planning to add 22,000 population, if I believe your numbers, I don't believe anything you say, you are bringing another 11,000, that's another 50% increase. Where do you put them? Where do you put the car? Where do you put the children? How many of the new constructions are affecting the price of the existing apartments? Have you done this study? Have you done this analysis? If so, let us see it. I spoke about the foreclosures. Is anybody checking the background, income and assets sourced of all the recent and new buyers and developers? And I'm raising this question very seriously because I understand that the drug money is pouring here and is building, trying to build and take over this city. And we need to protect it. And I'm completely opposing this amendment. I didn't even know about this meeting until I got the letter from RK. I would not have known and I would not have been here. You failed to inform us of what you are doing behind closed doors and taking advantage of us. I have no place to go. This is my retirement, this is my investment, like somebody said. Where the hell am I going? What are you doing with my life and everybody else's? You are young, you can go wherever you want, but I can't. I made my final decision, I'm here to stay, but I see the value of my apartment going down, I see my view going down, I look at naked people, I look, I listen to DJs that is not music, it's just stomping, these savages from wherever they are coming. What kind of life is this? What are you doing to us? And why? What's behind it? Thank you.
Thank you, Lumi.
This time, I want an answer
Thank you, Lumi.
about the studies.
Thank you, Lumi.
Do you have any studies? If so, make them available to all of us before you make any other decision, any further steps.
Thank you, Lumi.
Okay, I think this is Lev Solodovin. Lev?
There he is. Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Actually, I have two agendas today. I am against
Could you say your name and address to the record, Lev?
Oh, my name is Lev Solodovnik. I'm representing, I'm a president of Winston Towers 300, it's 23174 Street. And I have two agendas. First of all, I am against this building because I think this building already congested and if quarter of the people are going to come back to east side buildings, I don't think we can drive, we would have to walk. Now, actually, I'm here for a different reason. We are trying to comply with the city requirements and we're going through 40 years assessment. So, we come up with comprehensive plan when we have to repair the garage, the deck, roof and a lot of other stuff. Our problem is, we have to relocate 30 to 60 vehicles in order to repair the garage and we can't park nowhere. And we were told that the city doesn't have any parking, so we basically can't do any work. So, I'd like to reconsider, maybe give us 30 to 40 permits to park on 174th Street.
I think
It's different agenda, but we've got a problem.
No, yeah.
I have a lot of residents, I have to go to work.
Okay. Do me a favor, why don't you come in and talk to the manager, okay? Because it's not something that we would do, it's administrative anyway. Shh, shh, shh. Please, everybody, please. So, what I suggest is, has he come in and talked to the, he has come in?
We are not the first one, there is other buildings that are going to go through the same repairs.
Right, right.
And what do we do?
Yeah.
The residents have to go to work.
Yeah, hold on, hold on. So, we offered gateway? We offered gateway, okay. Okay, shh, shh, shh. It's, unfortunately, we're off agenda, but
I understand, I didn't write it down, but
But we'll
The agenda is different, but it's a serious problem, there is other buildings we have to go.
Yeah, okay.
People are residents, they have to work, they have to bring the kids to the kindergarten, they can't park five blocks away and there is no parking.
I understand. I don't have an answer for you because I don't know the issue, but
Okay.
Like I said, you know, I'll, one of us will take it up with the manager and then we'll, and then we'll call you and discuss it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay? Thank you for coming, thank you. Katharina Schultz? There we go. Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Schultz. I live at 16445 Collins Avenue, which is actually Oceania Two. I've lived there since 1993, when we still believed in view corridors, along with the low west side. Everything everybody has said so far is, is really, I think for me, the thing I'm going to ask of you guys as our elected officials is, there keeps being easements, there keeps being taller buildings and no wind studies. The wind gets faster, the higher up it is when there's a storm. I think the hope for me would be, I know we got a little issue because we've kind of overbuilt some stuff and it's out of compliance, but just in the same way that we move airspace around all the time to make bigger, bigger buildings, shouldn't there be some way, without increasing density and intensity, we can balance things out so we're not out of compliance with our master plan, but that we don't make what is almost a double jump in intensity? A two to a three and a half is almost a two to a four. And I remember being able to drive down Sunny Isles Boulevard, I work at Jackson North. It takes me seven minutes to get to the Sunny Isles Bridge and in season, it takes me another half hour to pull onto Oceania's property. And guess what? In the summer, it's almost the same. And we've neglected to have a place for UPS and FedEx trucks to stop, so they just stop in the next lane out, which is sometimes an extra lane because we've closed a lane, and it's, it's kind of endless. So, anyway, that's my two cents, please don't do this to us. One of the things that got said was our financial interests and I would say that Oceania Two is my home. It's not a financial interest. I've lived there since 93 and I'm not going anywhere, I live here year-round. And it's getting harder and harder to live here. The beaches are more and more crowded. Somewhere along the way, we tagged Riviera of Florida. I don't know if you've ever looked at an aerial view of the Riviera, it's like wall-to-wall bodies. I really kind of liked it when it was open beach, but anyway, that's all I have to say. Please don't do this to us.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
I'll try my best. Yehudid Marinoff?
There she is.
Great.
It's my neighbor.
Yehudid Marinoff, 18540 North Bay Road. I live on the water and in the last week, I see the coming from the dorm to check the water because they said they're going to build Marina and it's really a big concern for me because with the hurricane, with the disaster and a few things I want to say. I think you should put all your energy to do camera to the city because everybody driving down Collins Avenue like crazy, like maniac. I think you should keep the quality of the resident the way it is. Don't bring any more trash in, which everything going to be Airbnb, which we have now, and everybody in the suitcase all over the street. And I think we should do, don't do this meeting in the middle of July, which everybody in vacation, otherwise you have 20,000 resident here and nobody even get the email. If I don't have neighbors, I wouldn't even know. I have the meeting tonight, which I just signed this morning and I stopped her and I told her, "Are you Sunny Isles resident? We have a meeting tonight." And she was laughing at me, you know? And I think we should, everybody get the email, 20,000 resident, you should have 20,000 resident in the meeting because everybody against it and I'm not going to repeat myself. Just do, because if you have a problem, they say, "Call the police." The police say, "Call to the city." The city, you talk to the machine like AT&amp;T, nobody answer the phone. So, for you, consider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Axana Paisak? Axana?
When I can pronounce. David Grossman. Where's David?
Good evening, David Grossman, 23174 Street, Winston Towers 400. I'm curious to find out if there's any cards up there with anyone who came from the general public to speak in support of this measure. Is there a single person that came to speak in support of this?
Yeah, yeah, they sorted them for me before they gave them to me, so.
What's the ratio, 100 to 1?
Yes, yeah.
I think that says it all. If just about everyone came down tonight to oppose this measure and you all were elected to do the will of the public that came down opposing this measure and alternatives have been presented tonight to you, especially also an out, you would be given this due process out to take, why don't you just vote no? Give everyone a chance to participate in this, you know, planning and maybe we'll come up with something better. Because I think voting yes would just be betraying just about everyone who's in this room. Voting no would give us an opportunity as a community to move forward and find a better alternative. I'm sure there's one out there. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Carmen Western? Carmen? Carmen? No? Okay. You're coming out from both directions? Yeah, that's good, that's all right. There you go, that's right, you got all sides covered.
Hello, my name is Andrea Levitt. I live at 16485 Collins Avenue, Sunny Isles Beach, Apartment 934. And I just have a simple question for each and every one of you. And the simple question is, who do you work for?
Let her finish.
It's a question you can answer if you know the answer. And I believe you do. The answer is, you work for us, the residents. And I think you've heard from the residents tonight, the residents are unanimous, almost unanimously opposed to this. And that's who you should work for. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alan Levitt. I am at 16485 Collins Avenue, Apartment 934, my wonderful wife Andrea. And one of the things that you all here at the dais have a disadvantage of is you didn't get, I believe, to see what was happening outside. The number of people that were here, the number of people that are in the other room and would have liked to have been in the other room, the fact that every parking space for blocks around here is filled with concerned residents. I'm a physician and a number of my patients work with the city and are residents of the city. I'm honored to see so many of my Oceania neighbors out here tonight, representing their opinions and their concerns about this. I hear quite often from my patients how much they love the idea of Sunny Isles, but they, as we've heard other people say, they don't want to come because it is so challenging to park and deal with the traffic. So, where are, who's going to support the businesses? I'm a small businessman. I need people to be able to come and park and be able to easily access and if the density keeps going up, who can afford to pay a rent for any of the spaces that are available? Cities depend on, as you well know, taxes paid by the tenants, the professionals, the business people, the store owners, the restaurants. They have to have clients to be able to make their bills paid and to be able to pay their taxes to the city. So, I urge you to please listen to the majority of people who have spoken tonight, the vast majority, the people who would have been here if they weren't able to know about it ahead and to table this or vote no and give it the additional full consideration that this important matter deserves. I thank you.
Thank you. No worries, no worries, thanks. Tamara Dempsey?
Yeah, my name is Tamara Dempsey, I'm resident of Oceania Three. It's 16485 Collins Avenue, Apartment 2085. And I agree with everything what previous speakers was talking about. I just want to say that I represent like hundreds of residents of Oceania. I collected what, no signatures from them and you have it here, okay? We just against of this Infinity Project and increasing density in the city.
Thank you, thank you. Antonina O'Connell? No? Is that, that's not her? Okay, okay. Daniel Cinti? Daniel? No? Okay. George Lawrence?
Hi, my name is George Lawrence, I'm a resident of Ocean Two. I reside there with my wife, we bought in 2002 and moved in in 2004. I just came here because the only thing I saw was the article in a community newspaper which indicated 6,000 hotel rooms on the west side of Collins. Hotel rooms are a very funny animal. They have, to be successful, they have to be well-located, they have to be desirable. It's a retail commodity, you're selling rooms every night. There's three primary hotel sites in the whole area of Miami. They are the Fontainebleau, the Diplomat and one that isn't even built on the site of the Miami Herald. Two of them are beach sites and the third one has public transportation because of the Metro mover in downtown Miami. So, where are, who's going to support the businesses? I'm a small businessman. I need people to be able to come and park and be able to easily access. And if the density keeps going up, who can afford to pay a rent for any of the spaces that are available? Cities depend on, as you well know, taxes paid by the tenants, the professionals, the business people, the store owners, the restaurants. They have to have clients to be able to make their bills paid and to be able to pay their taxes to the city. So I urge you to please listen to the majority of people who have spoken tonight, the vast majority, the people who would have been here if they weren't able to know about it ahead and to table this or vote no and give it the additional full consideration that this important matter deserves. I thank you.
Thank you. No worries. No worries. Thanks. Tamara Dempsey?
Yeah, my name is Tamara Dempsey. I'm resident of Oceania Three. It's 16485 Collins Avenue, apartment 2085. And I agree with everything what previous speakers was talking about. I just want to say that I represent like hundreds of residents of Oceania. I collected what, no signatures from them and you have it here, okay? We just against of this infinity project and increasing density in the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Antonina O'Connell? No? Is that, that's not her? Okay, okay. Daniel Cinti? Daniel? No? Okay. George Lawrence?
Hi. My name is George Lawrence. I'm a resident of Ocean Two. I reside there with my wife. We bought in 2002 and moved in in 2004. I just came here because the only thing I saw was the article in a community newspaper which indicated six thousand hotel rooms on the west side of Collins. Hotel rooms are a very funny animal. They have, to be successful, they have to be well-located, they have to be desirable. It's a retail commodity. You're selling rooms every night. There's three primary hotel sites in the whole area of Miami. They are the Fontainebleau, the Diplomat, and one that isn't even built on the site of the Miami Herald. Two of them are beach sites and the third one has public transportation because of the Metro mover in downtown Miami. These six thousand hotel rooms are going to be marginal from day one. Marginal hotel uses deteriorate. They go down the feeding chain to worse and worse uses. Prostitution is among them. Beyond that is welfare housing. Beyond that is predatory condo development of individual hotel rooms and time shares. There's a hotel right now, Duville, in North Beach in Miami, which is currently vacant and it was occupied by squatters because it was converted from hotel use to individual condo units. People started living there. They started cooking there. The electric was unsuitable. They had a hotel fire. The whole building is empty. And this is the, this is going to be the equivalent of having, six thousand rooms is the equivalent of six convention hotels. And I can understand why the plan doesn't call for a lot of housing units because the amount of housing units in Sunny Isles now is a joke. There are seventeen and a half years of housing available at current consumption rates in, in Sunny Isles. Much of it is the result of the misuse of TDRs, which added tremendous bulk to these buildings. And the piper has to be paid on this. There's no schoolrooms for this. I don't know when Sunny Isles will have to add a second treatment plant. There's more and more seaweed every year in the ocean, which means the ocean is getting more fertile, which is a result of inadequate sewage treatment. So this is just craziness. I can understand why it was done. Spot zoning is illegal. If you spot zone two acres, it would be a real no-no. So what you've done with the city planning commission proposal is creating a bigger spot, a thirty, a thirty-eight acre spot in the hopes of passing it. But it is so transparent and so ridiculous, including the explanation of the city planning person who never clearly answered the request that to move something from a density of two FAR to three point five. It was never answered that that was an upzoning. It was couched in a million things about this interpretation. It really is an insult to the public that this proposal for these six thousand hotel rooms exists. They didn't have the nerve to propose more housing because, of course, that's a joke. Everything is going down, including the new housing. So be careful. Let the person build whatever they can build according to the existing zoning. You don't need to jeopardize thirty-eight acres. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Felix Kirchner. Felix?
Good evening, dear Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. First of all, please don't kill the DJs. They're not at fault at the parties.
Name and address to the record, Felix. Thank you.
Number two is, I think there's some very good things that city does for the people. It's not all black and white. For example, on one side, you put a law for short-term rentals.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Name and address to the record.
My name is Felix Kirchner. I live on 25174th Street. I also rent for Commission West End. Anyway, you do very good things for the city. You get rid of the short-term rentals.
Shh, 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 please, please be quiet.
And yet, when you want to approve the hotels, that is about as short-term rentals it gets. I also understood that as I attend these meetings, you say, "We have no problem approving Twin Towers, Aquilina" because it's only about twenty percent occupancy. And it's tax revenue. So there's good things that were done with this money, but yet, there comes a tipping point. And I think, I think reasonably, every single one of you, and I believe, I don't think it's fair everyone says mayor because mayor has one vote, guys. There's other members. Three votes will decide this. Not one vote, not the mayor decides. Everyone decides here and they have a vote. So please, listen to the people. You've done some very good things. Do not spoil it and destroy it now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Felix. Carmen Tillot? Carmen?
Thank you, Mayor. Carmen Tillot. Business address, 202 Sunny Isles Boulevard, unit six. I come back on the podium. I, I sit here for the last two hours. I hear a lot of angry people, a lot of people that are not fully informed. I see a lot of confusion, a lot of bad info. And I'm here to make a suggestion. As a business owner, it does affect me and not necessarily in a bad way. My suggestion is that we eliminate all this confusion that we have in our city. Maybe the city wants to invest and create a very easy-to-read pamphlet with very layman's terms. I was at the hospital with my mom. Neurologist comes in and starts talking mumbo-jumbo, expects me to understand. I'm not a doctor. I couldn't understand. A lot of these people here don't know a lot of the terminology that we use here at the city. A lot of it is legal terms. And I think that we need to create some kind of pamphlet to inform people so that they understand and they can come up here and argue the right way.
No, no. Shh, 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 shh. Come on, come on. Everybody's respectful, please.
I respected you all. Have a little courtesy.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I hear a lot of concrete jungle, infinity project, repeated times. And that's not what we're here for. We're here for something else. We're not here to listen to those plans that are coming in. When the time comes that those buildings come in to get reviewed with you, that'll be those meetings. We're here for something else. And we keep hearing this noise about these buildings that we're going to build and all this other stuff. One of the suggestions that I heard the public talk about is, "Why don't you, instead of doing that, why don't you build us some more parks?" We'll tell you what. We have lots of parks in our community and I would say more than half of those are not being used. In my new business location.
Shh, 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 shh.
In my new business location.
Go ahead, Carmen.
My new business location, I'm literally right across the street from the new park, the Gateway Park. My business opens Monday through Friday. I'm usually there from seven-thirty in the morning until eight, ten o'clock at night. I have a full, complete view to that park. If you see three cats at that park on a daily basis, it's too many. The only time you see people at that park is when you guys do your concerts and events and stuff like that. Otherwise, these parks are not being used, only but maintained. We're paying maintenance, we're paying the park guy to be there and all of that. As I, as a business, I actually do welcome new residents to our area and guests to our community. I lived at the RK Plaza for four years and those businesses, they can't stay alive. What I do for a living is I open businesses. I do licensing. And it's very sad that we open businesses and they go out of business really quick because they don't get enough business and the rents are extremely high. So it makes it difficult to be a business owner here when we're not getting enough business. There's not enough traffic for the business. There's traffic on our streets and I totally agree with everyone behind me. I get stuck in traffic too, even when I stay late at my office thinking, "Oh, I'll just miss the traffic." I don't. And, and it's a pain, just like it is for everybody else. It takes me, and I live literally right on the other side of Biscayne and Aventura, and it takes me sometimes thirty minutes, forty-five minutes to go home. It's, it's a ten, fifteen-minute drive. And that's hard. I now sit in my office and I'm right on Sunny Isles Boulevard on 163rd. So I do get that morning traffic and I.
Please, please, come on. Everybody got a turn to speak. This is exactly what I was talking about. Just because she doesn't agree with it doesn't mean that she doesn't have her, have her opportunity to speak.
I'm a business owner. I pay tax just like you.
Yes. She works in the city. Please, please, please. Go, go ahead, Carmen.
My son is a resident here in Sunny Isles. My employees are residents here in Sunny Isles. There's been quite the debate in my office over this meeting happening today. A lot of different opinions. I think that we really need to clarify to our residents what's really going on and why they're here today. They all think they're here for something else. They're all talking about something else.
Ella, Ella, come on, come on. Go ahead, Carmen.
I think I said what I needed to say. I'm sorry that people don't want to listen.
No worries.
It's just an opinion. I'm not for and I'm not against. It's my opinion.
Thank you.
I think we need to be better informed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you. No, come on now. Come on. Okay. The clerk will decide when the three minutes is up, so that's okay. Fabiola? Fabiola? Is she here? There she is. There she is.
Hello, everybody. Fabiola Stuibeson, 326 Poensiana Drive. I love the city. I've been here for twelve years since I came from Venezuela for very hard circumstances. And the thing that I like the most is that it really looked like the place I used to live in Venezuela. And over there, we have on the side of the beach, not as luxury, of course, as here. And here is, on the east side of Collins, we have extremely luxurious buildings. Beautiful. And on the west side, we have like an old-town kindish feeling. And one thing that I used to like and I'm now very nostalgic about it is about the Publix. Because, for example, the Publix used to be so convenient for us. We put the car in the car wash, we do our groceries, we can out, car is ready, we go home. Now that's gone and it's not coming back because we did something more modern, whatever you want to say, okay? But that old-townish feeling is going away. So I know everybody's talking about the past of Sunny Isles, but I want to talk also about the future. And I would like to keep it as it is right now. I wasn't here when the promises were made, but it's so beautiful to have the best of the two worlds, the luxury on the east and the old-townish feeling on the west. Also, I used to come in with the, to the, to these meetings a few years ago when you were considering building next door the middle school. I'm so proud that all the parents that we came here were able to maybe convince you, I don't know if that's the word, for you guys not to continue that project. Because I have two children in the school and a newborn baby. So all my kids are going there and in the future. And we don't need a middle school. And we prove it. Why? Because we have people coming from Aventura, Highlander, everywhere to our school. Building a new school only will make more crowded, bringing more people, more seats, and they will come. There is something called the McKinney-Vento Act in the Miami Day, which says, in between many other things, that homeless children have to have a place in the school. One thing about the act is that children in hotels are considered homeless by the Miami Day Act. I'm going to give you guys information so you can research it if you don't know. So, we have already people coming for vacation from Argentina, Russia, Colombia, wherever. And they come for two weeks vacation with their kids. They come and they sign up, the kids in the school, and the school cannot say no. They accept those children. They come four days, five days, ten days because the parents want to go in the beach, they want to be in the movies, they want to be in the mall, in the whatever. And they stay those children in our classrooms with our kids and when they finish their vacation, they go. And we have that constantly happen. I'm very involved with the school and part of the East Side Committee, which is kind of the board of the school. And we always talk about the overcrowdedness and we cannot do anything. Or they say, "We cannot do anything." The city approved one person to work in there to try to clean the school from the people that you guys are paid, we paid for it, you guys approve it and we thank you. And it didn't bring no good result. So, I'm concerned about the school. I'm concerned about the safety because when they say that we are going to bring more hotel rooms, it's true. It's a floating group of people that we don't do no background checks. We don't know if the people, which are their intentions, where they are coming. And we have a very like sheltered city. We have first graders, second graders walking alone from the school to their homes. So the most shelter, and we have a amazing police department that is always around, but still, the more shelter that we can keep it, it's the best for us, the residents. So, traffic, of course, is an issue, utilities. And I know that they say about the, that it's already approved to make eighty-five units per acre. Even if we can do it, that doesn't mean that we have to do it. I mean, that's the top. It doesn't mean we have to get to that top. So my consideration or my advice would be, I will recommend for all of you, because I know all of you and I like you guys personally. So I would recommend not to vote right now, maybe postpone until there is more information and take it from there because people is angry. I'm more than angry, I'm scared. And I'm scared about the school and I'm scared about safety and I'm scared about traffic. So, that's it.
Thank you, Fabiola. Thank you. Okay. So I've got four speakers left and they're gonna, and these are circled four. So I would please let folks speak and don't, don't give them a hard time, okay? Because they let, we were very respectful of everybody else's speaking today. And so first is Judge Mark Mogul. Mark Mogul? Where's? Yeah. I'm going to go back through here again, so.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Council. Mark Mogul, 25174th Street, Sunny Isles Beach. My family has owned where I live since 1982. I've heard comments that I am commiserating with about not being able to see the ocean. From my balcony in Winston Towers, I can't see the ocean other than in between buildings. And that's because of what is admitted to be the east-side debacle created by former Mayor Edelkopf, high and wide. I want to make clear, we're not here today to discuss the Infinity Project. When I hear people talking about they're against this building or against increased density or against the specific Infinity Project, I know something has been lost in the transmission. All we're here today is to have the city try to rectify the comprehensive plan with the Realty Codes so that we are in alignment with what the state will mandate for us. That's the only reason we're here today. I'm not going to tell you I would support the Infinity Project or any other real estate, the high-rise development on the west side because I probably wouldn't. But that's not why we're here. So to argue about that and have cat calls and names is fruitless. The purpose is merely to deal with what happened, a potential legal oversight in 2011 when the code was amended by the state and was not picked up on by our then-city attorney. And all I've heard are threats of litigation and insults against Mayor Shoal and voting and supporting and promises. Well, I do have one problem with Mayor Shoal. He's too gentle. He's too much the gentleman. He's got too much class for certain situations. Other than that, I've never met a more intelligent, thoughtful and sensitive person. The misleading attacks on our people sitting here is, in reality, and I'm going to call it as I see it, I've done that all my life, is collusion between a billionaire developer, a former city attorney now working for that billionaire, a former mayor and the publisher of a throwaway giveaway news weekly, Grant Miller. Let's look at the cast of characters and their motives. Important. As for RK, talk to any tenant at his many-dated brick-and-mortar strip malls. As for RK, talk to any tenant at his many dated brick and mortar strip malls, or online at the lawsuits he's unsuccessfully brought against critics, and you'll know who and what you're dealing with. We've heard nothing but threats. He despises any business competition, and former city manager Cohen stated in an official state investigation that Ronan Katz's real estate applications were ordered, and I quote, prioritized by his good friend, former Mayor Edelcup. Little deal with developers, maybe. In fact, his many strip malls are the leading cause of Collins' gridlock and choking traffic congestion in this city. His carbon footprint is bigger than his ego. Former city Hans, city attorney Hans Attenat, I won't go into at, at great length, other than to say, despite what he says now, he was there at every stage of what Mayor Edelcup did. He approved everything they did to the letter in writing, and anything you want to blame on blocking our view of the ocean, and any real estate problems, he was aware of. Now, he suddenly became unaware that they were illegal when he bailed. It was his job to catch these things before he bailed. Now, as finally as to Mayor Edelcup, um, he is the, what I call, and most have called, the proximate cause of the Norman S. Edelcup Great Wall of Sunny Isles Beach. That has stolen our magnificent ocean views due to the granting of endless variances to greedy developers he supported and made benefits from. He allowed a concrete nightmare, high and wide, despite what he says about balance, so that the developers could line their pockets, in fact, noted developer Jay Milton threw him a formal kickoff campaign gala at the Saint-Tropez in 2010. There wasn't a developer that Norman didn't love, and the Sun Post called us the best managed city if you are a developer. Yet, now Edelcup has the gall to criticize Mayor Shoal, smiling at him when we all know what he feels. Shoal was a commissioner until, since 2007 before becoming mayor, and always was the only person on this commission who voted no against Edelcup's variances for the east side. He voted against these monster buildings that are there now. He obviously despises Mayor Shoal, and anything and anyone he supports, and has endorsed criminals and other mediocrity to run against people of quality supported by our mayor, because Bud defeated his puppet Lou Thaler to succeed him. He is filled with vitriol and bitterness, and is at the center of this mesh which began when he was mayor. Members of this commission, I urge you to do the right thing, the legal thing, to stay away from yielding to the collusive tactics of bitter and mean spirited people who think money controls everything and can be used and is used to scare the public. Let's keep in mind what this meeting should be about. There will be a proper forum and notice and a hearing on any specific issue that comes up, and any project that is proposed, I may be the first one in line to say, please vote no, but for now, I urge you to go ahead and vote your conscience and follow the law, thank you.
Okay, um, no Hans, Hans.
Mayor, Mayor Hans, he hasn't, he hasn't attacked my integrity, in fact, Mayor Shoal.
Hans, you don't have a form here Hans.
I just want a note for the record, I want a note for the record.
You don't have a form Hans.
That we are not here, we not, we not here to, to name call anyone. We are here, as my client Sands Point, to protect the quality of life of the residents in Sunny Isles Beach.
Okay, Hans.
So that's the issue, and, and the public record, and I'm going to tell all the residents.
Hans, you're breaking your ethics, Hans, you can't do this, okay, you know it and I know it, okay?
Mayor Shoal, I am a member of the bar, the judge is not a member of the bar, you know that, and he was instructed to come here by you.
Our city attorney says, he wasn't instructed to come here by me.
He slandered my name, and I know you calling him.
My name's been slandered up and down the block for the last three weeks, okay?
You instructed him to be here.
I didn't instruct anyone to be here Hans.
We're going to find out to a public record request, we're going to get your text.
Be my guest.
We're going to get a text.
You subpoenaed everything else we got, be my guest Hans, all, all the public records you want. Okay, um, okay, we got three more speakers left, okay, so we're in the home stretch here, Joe Milton. Shh, 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 shh.
Joseph Milton, uh, 330 Sunny Isles Boulevard, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, um, it's, I've had a lot of, I've had a-
Quiet please, shh, okay, go ahead.
I've had a lot of, uh, respect for the commission and the mayors and your predecessors. I've been, uh, working in this city since 1994, and it's been a pleasure to work with all of you and, and see all the improvements that have happened in the city. We were part of the Gateway Park, developing it and investing in it for the public use. The, uh, I'm not here to support any increase in density or intensity, that's, that's not my, that's not why I'm here. In fact, I own no land in the area of concern, I have no land or I have no interest in buying any land there. And I have a great friendship and respect for Renan Katz, so. What I am concerned about is that within this zoning, and I, and I was involved in every zoning, uh, development since the comprehensive plan, since 2000. I was here in 1994, in 1997 when it became a city, the first, uh, CO in the city was the Pinnacle, which was our development. And we participated, participated in the comprehensive plan, and there were several professionals involved. Uh, Calvin Giordano was involved, um, they had public workshops in which the public was involved, and many of you who were not, uh, mayor or commissioners at the time were involved, because there was an interest for the community. The, um, and, and everything was approved, everything that you abide by today was approved. Every single, uh, property I brought here has been approved within the zoning, uh, laws of the city. And that includes the whole south side of Sunny Isles Boulevard, that Saint-Tropez, Park Towers, and currently there are 600 residents. So, if you're taking away the zoning that is in place by not doing this comprehensive plans, what happens to the rights of those 600 residents? What happens if there is a condemnation, what happens if there is something by force majeure that does cause massive destruction? What happens to the rights, do they have the rights to rebuild with the zoning that they had when, when I built the property to begin with? Or are they non-conforming at that moment going forward? So, that's my concern, I'm not looking to increase density or intensity by any means, I have no interest in, in the businesses that are here left, but I have an interest and a responsibility to my buyers that are currently living there, that their rights are not taken away by you changing the, the game tonight, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to run back through the list of folks that didn't make it, and, um, let's try that one again.
Nella Mizbarazkaya, Nella?
No, okay, um, Stephanie Henry, we heard from already, I had that one on my list, um, um, Oksana?
Uh, Oksana Pies, uh, Piesetchev?
Nope, okay, did we hear from Carmen, Carmen Western? Okay, yeah, Carmen Western, I can read that one, no, okay, um, Antonina O'Connell? No, okay, and then Danielle Cinti, I, did we hear from Dan, from Daniel, Dan, Danielle Cinti, okay. Um, okay, we got two left, um, Jeanette Gatto, where's Jeanette, our former Commissioner?
Good evening Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Jeanette Gatto, 230 174th Street. I'm going to make a little bit of a left turn here. I'd like to address some of the written communications that were delivered to the residents of our city, and the reaction as it related to tonight's vote, or ordinance I should say. Let's start with the Sunny Isles Beach newspaper article, written by the publisher of that newspaper. There was no doubt that that article was designed to deliberately stoke anger, fear, and confusion among city residents by reporting that tonight the city was creating a path for development of 6,000 units in the Town Center District. And I know Mayor, you're going to get an opportunity to explain what that's about. That article also maligned the city commission. I then learned that the publisher never contacted city staff, the mayor, or any of the Commissioners for input. Additionally, the article essentially mirrored Renan Katz's first open letter to the mayor. That is when I put two and two together and realized the fix was in. Here's what I thought to myself, we should all be very worried if a publisher of our community newspaper feels that he can report one-sided and unverified content without consequences directly to the residents of the city. On top of that, the tone and manner of the article was not factual, and it was actually an unadulterated hit piece. Whatever happened to fair and balanced journalism? It doesn't exist when you take sides, but that's what the publisher did. He took a side that is quintessential definition of propaganda, it was biased and misleading. Now, because that article went unchallenged, it swiftly caused public outcry, outcry on a popular SIB Facebook forum. Now, I'm not against that community forum, or any community forums, because it provides a snapshot of the minds and emotions of the people in the community, which is a good thing. But that newspaper article and Mr. Katz's open letter stoked such high emotions on that forum that it caused members to dive in headfirst with negative comments about our elected officials. As I said before, I believe the intent of the newspaper article was to create, or to cause anger, fear, and it succeeded. Let me give you some examples of some of those Facebook comments. One person commented that a Commissioner accepted a campaign donation from a developer, and then alluded to the fact that that Commissioner can easily be bought. Someone responded to that exact comment with, and I quote, "That is nothing compared to the tens of millions they make out of every concession they get from them." Tens of millions. Then there was a former candidate who weighed in and bragged about not accepting developer money during his campaign. He actually made the accusation that he lost the election because there was a political machine run by the mayor who was rigging elections up at City Hall. It went on and on with many accusations aimed at the commission for being on the take, all without evidence. Now, I understand the concept of freedom of speech, but there seems to be a notion that freedom of speech means you can write anything you want about anyone, even slander someone, without any consequences whatsoever. I don't know anyone who likes to be publicly attacked, but you know, it could work both ways. Many members of that Facebook forum, actually along with two former elected officials, outwardly supported a candidate who was charged with fraud and still owes the state of Florida over $20,000 in fines. Think about that. How can you, on the one hand, support a candidate with a proven criminal background, and then turn around and make unverified accusations publicly about Commissioners being on the take? You have to ask yourself why anyone would take these people seriously. I really don't enjoy saying that, but I really didn't enjoy how this episode unfolded in the public domain. I'm angry, and I am willing to forgive the individuals who wrote false and disparaging remarks about the city commission. I truly am, because they were manipulated. They were manipulated into believing that tonight's vote was to create a path for six, a 6,000 unit development in the Town Center District. I can understand their reaction, however, I will condemn those who scared good people for their own self-serving purpose, whatever that might be. I hope this is a teachable moment for our residents. I have to admit that this isn't the first time the residents of this city have let me down. Many never attend a commission meeting, have never seen them at a workshop, nor at a city advisory committee meeting. The majority of our residents don't donate to the school fund or the PTA, they don't volunteer. Over the eight-year period I served as a Commissioner, I can count on one hand how many people made an appointment to come up to see me, to discuss, to discuss issues or problems that I can help solve, and help them through whatever, whatever issues they are having. And it was always the same five people. But the one thing our residents don't hesitate to do is attend free city events and take advantage of the various giveaways the city generously provides, all possible because of the commission.
Shh, 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 shh. Please, I didn't cut anybody off Ella, everybody got to speak today, shh, please, please, everybody got to speak tonight. Everybody got to speak tonight, Ella, everybody got to speak tonight, thank you.
I think these people behind me are proving my point. All possible because the commission has always put these residents first. So here is my message to the residents of this city. If you want to have a voice, if you want to make a difference, especially if you have concerns about an important issue such as this one, and need to get straight facts, then please show up and participate. The defin-
Shh, 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 please.
Not consistently.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's, go ahead and finish it.
The definition of community involvement is not sitting behind a computer, believing what you read, taking it as face value, and throwing rocks at whatever targets were presented at you while enjoying the fruits of the labor, of the labor of the people you just maligned. This is not an effective way to get involved or get the attention of your elected officials. So once again, I'm addressing the people of this community, you can do better, I know you can. And if you want to make a difference, don't wait for this one critical time to show up, just show up.
Thank you, thank you, okay.
Yeah, don't let you off.
Danny Iglesias, last but not least, so. Shh, 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 shh.
Danny Iglesias, 270 Atlantic Avenue, and Sands Point, just for the record, and I guess Norman, you got to feel like, uh, Al Pacino. Just when we're out, they pull us back in. You know, it's, uh, it's funny, but, um, as an original Commissioner on the first commission, and the other one that's left alive, which shows you that this job can kill you. You, I remember the many, many hours, months, weeks, we would have commission meetings every week, workshop every week, working the comprehensive plan. And I remember that one of the reasons this city's been successful is because we got everyone involved. Now, certain things don't change. When you're going to have a, a, a condominium coming up, the people next to you are going to protest, and I got it, okay? I totally get it, but the truth of the matter is that I'm not here really to support or be against any particular project. I'm here with an issue that really, really concerns me, because I'm a believer that half the truth is almost like a lie. Okay, it's that simple. You don't want to go to the doctor, even though he's your friend, and tell you he's right when you know you've got six months left, okay? A year maybe if you got to pay the bill, but whatever it is, at the end of the day, you got to tell them the truth. And what we have here is we have a, a situational problem that I remember in working very hard and being one of the people that voted in favor like Norman for this comp plan, it was because we took the input of the workshops that were here. And God, I wish all these people that are here would have been participating in those workshops for the many, many hours, okay? We put in what the people wanted very clearly, it's in the, was the comprehensive plan, and all those buildings that have been built before was because of the intent of what we said. Now, again, we're Commissioners, I personally am an engineer, I'm not a lawyer, so if something fell through the cracks, it wasn't because we ignored it, it wasn't because it wasn't cotton, okay? And what we did here, what is shown there is what the people brought to us, which we voted for, because that's what they wanted, it isn't something we made up, all right? And I'm telling you, I had five apartments in Sands Point, and when I voted, I knew that maybe someday somebody may build a building and may affect my view. But that's the price you pay when you sit up there, you got to look for everybody. Because I guarantee you, most of the people that are here are complaining, and rightfully so. I guarantee you, don't live in the north end, they live in the area where it can affect them. And I get that people are concerned with traffic, I did this for a living 35 years in DOT and I'm still doing it, okay? And if you take, forget the Infinity Project, forget about that one, don't build it. And if you take, forget the Infinity Project, forget about that one, don't build it. If you take 10% of the buildings that are on the East Side, you're still not going to affect the level of service on Collins Avenue. That's a fact. You can say anything you want, but if there's any traffic engineer here that can tell me that, that could argue with me, please, I'd like to speak with you, because I'm going to go personally after your license, because that's how I've done my living since 1980. What you've got here is a fundamental problem that you really have to address. And that's the fact that our intent, and when we were approving these buildings, that the workshops told us that we had to do, turns out that they're not in conformance. And right now, one thing holds true, and Lynn told me from the very beginning, your comprehensive plan is a living document, and it's got to be tweeted, just like the DOT plans have to be tweeted when a variance comes along. The same variance that you guys are enjoying for all those landscapes that we have here on Collins Avenue, that if those variances weren't taken by us engineers, all you would have would be grass, and people would be crossing because there'd be no median to protect you. So right now, I believe the commission has a fiduciary responsibility to make this comprehensive plan legal. Because I want to tell you one thing. The Infinity Project, since everybody's mentioning it, man, I wish I would have bought stock in that project, because no matter what happens, they're going to win. Because if you go against what they bought to build and intend, you better back up the Brink's truck, because they're going to sue you and they're going to win. And so would be every other developer that's in that district that bought land to develop with the intent of what was proposed. Okay? And that's what nobody's saying has nothing to do. Everybody has the right to protest whatever they want when a building comes up, everyone. And I support that right. I may protest myself if there's a variance. But right now, heaven help us if there's a hurricane, because there isn't a developer here that's just going to go, hmm, I'm either going to build or you're going to pay me. And they're going to win. And that's the part that needs correcting, and we need to correct it today. And when another building comes up in the future that you want to vote against it, go in there. But let me tell you something. I have a vested interest in this, my taxes. Because if something happens here, that the developers start lining their pocket because they sue because we screwed up, I'm not going to blame anybody because Renan is a friend of mine, Hans is a friend of mine. It's just something that was missed. If this isn't fixed, we've got a serious problem. And prepare for your taxes to go up, because that's how you fix it. That's exactly how you fix it, when the money has to come up from the commission. So I'm encouraging you, think carefully what you're going to do tonight, because it's going to affect you and it's going to affect all of us. Thank you.
I slipped, speaking of things getting-
I'm sorry, ma'am, I can't take it, it doesn't work that way. No, sorry. Diane?
I slipped in a slip to-
You did?
... opportunity to-
Okay, great, I'm sorry, I didn't see it, Diane. All right? Where is it? Diane? Okay, if you filled one out, Diane, I'm going to, I didn't see it, but I'm going to believe you. How's that? Come on up.
I appreciate that.
Name and address for the record.
Okay, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, and fellow citizens. I'm Diane Collins, 16425 Collins Avenue, and that's Oceania Tower 1. And I appreciate what everyone has brought out tonight, and I just want to go on the record of saying that I'm against, because with this former gentleman before me, there obviously is a problem that you have to correct, but that may not be the only way to correct it. And I'm sure that in an infinite possibility universe, we could come up with some other possible fixes without, as people have been saying, opening, whether it's opening a path or not, by putting in this new comprehensive plan. It's obviously opening, Commissioner Goldman, it's obviously opening the possibility of that building now going on the West Side. And by the way, there are people here who it doesn't directly affect, because there are plenty of people here south of 163rd Street who are totally against this. What we need, I think, I want to address a few things. One is, from an overview, what we need is some comprehensive thinking on the whole, because we're not an isolated town. We've got, you know, obviously, there's the whole beach, there's Golden Beach, there's all the towns that are adjacent to us going south. So when we talk about traffic, it's a bigger issue than just this one little horribly congested, already congested area. So when we're looking at something that I don't think anyone mentioned tonight, is there's an issue in our world today, and that has to do with stress. And it's a big issue. And what we're talking about here, we live in a town where we have, because of the so-called wall and whatever, I have opinions on that, on the East Side, we have an issue of continuous building and construction from every point of view. So it's not only about what will potentially be on the West Side, we're talking about the East Side, there's plenty over there that's going to be ongoing, and my husband, Alan, and I look at it every, you know, riding past, the dust, the dirt, the grime, the stoppages, you can't drive at night, the lanes are closed, you have to use ways, you have to go all the way around half of the year to try to get any place, to get home. You can't get home. So without even the West Side even thinking about that, which this project, this Infinity Project, sounds like there's no logic for it in any universe, but just looking at what are we doing to the health, the emotional, mental health, physical health and well-being has to be also thought about in this comprehensive thinking. We have to be able to think about management. That's the other issue. So when you're talking about management, and maybe, you know, I don't know the ins and outs of the management of Bell Harbor Village, but it looks pretty good from the outside. And actually, I used to know the Vice Mayor a long time ago personally of that city. So there's a lot of thoughtfulness that goes into looking from an overview of the totality, of the aesthetics, of obviously the quality of life that everyone has spoken beautifully about tonight, and with a lot of facts about it, too. We're talking about that we live in a hurricane zone. We're talking about what the influx of people, are we, you know, these are what I mean by thinking. Are we a residential city? Are we a tourism city? Or what's the percentage? How do we want to prioritize? So we have to be looking at qualitative things, because it's affecting our health, it's affecting our finances, which people have talked about all night. I read an article the other day about how there's a lot less foreign investment, that home prices are already going down everywhere. I mean, Florida is still pretty good, but it probably won't be for long, especially with the rising tides. There's a lot of things to think about, and that's why I say comprehensive thinking, totally against the way that you're planning to fix this comprehensive plan, come up with another way to fix it. And obviously, you can't leave, as Mr. Milton said, you can't leave these people at risk, who we are already in violation of. I read your letter. But we also can't use sophistry, and I know there are a lot of not, English is not your first language, people here, so as a form of philosophy major, I'll give you a little lesson quickly. Sophistry means using arguments that appear to be viable to create a false, not a false, but a misleading conclusion. And so when people are standing up here, and many people have, not many, but enough, including, with all due respect, Bud, you know, not Bud, but Mayor Shaw, that, with all due respect, that we cannot use that argument without looking at the bigger picture. To use an argument and say, oh, no, we're not voting on that, we're only voting on this. Anyway, that's what I have to say. Come up with another solution, that's a more viable one, that all the constituents here, because I'm speaking on behalf of so many hundreds of people who could not be here tonight, and we know, and you know, that we don't want this, we're not being misled, Jeanette. We are looking at the totality and the outcome of what this vote would mean. And so I beseech you all to do the right thing on the quality of life for the people who live here.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you. And I learned a new word, so I didn't, I wasn't a philosophy major, but thank you.
Well, I knew that word.
You knew that word?
I sure did.
See, the lawyers knew that word, so. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Thank you for all your comments. Appreciate everybody. I think everybody behaved really well, too, so I appreciate that as well, because these things tend to get a little feisty from time to time.
I have a question. I have a question that I've been waiting to ask, and I think that it dovetails into what Mr. Milton said. And that's really, we haven't maybe drilled down far enough into what is the impact to the existing developments for having this mismatch or this error or this inconsistency. So my question to the city attorney and the city manager, I don't know where he is, if this text amendment is not adopted, how will existing property owners be harmed? Aren't their property rights already vested?
Right now, it's our opinion, our considered opinion, that those properties are nonconforming uses, so that in the event that there's a catastrophic event, there'll be a question as to whether they can build to those same densities and intensities as the former commissioner brought forth.
Okay. But is it true that they have vested property rights? And the other question that I had, that I asked internally, and I didn't really get an answer to, is are laws really retroactively applied? So is there retroactivity here, right?
No, it's merely to bring them, us into compliance with state law that requires density and intensity in our comprehensive plan.
So when you say that if it's a nonconforming use, have you reached out to the other, you know, developers? Have they, have we had a workshop? Have we really analyzed this? Are we really kind of, are we just saying basically they're a total nonconforming use, and then they're just out in this never, never land?
I don't know why we would meet with those developers. They've sold their properties, they've sold their units, they're down the road. It's the residents there, and, but this is a legal determination, it's not anything that needs to be discussed.
So the only danger here is that if there's a, the only-
Shh, shh, please, please, please.
So the only danger that you're articulating here is that if there's a force majeure condition, there will be a question as to whether or not they can rebuild. Is there any other factor, or that's basically just this kind of, we don't have a determination, but we think there's a nonconforming use?
That's my opinion.
Okay.
All right? So what we need to do is to amend the comprehensive plan to bring us into compliance with state law for this, these 23 properties located within the town center.
But there are ways to, there are ways to bring them into conformance, or is this the only way to do this?
There's no such thing as grandfathering them in. You have to amend the comp plan so that all of those projects that were approved with the understanding that they were in compliance will in fact be in compliance.
Let's parse that for a minute. So what he's saying is, the buildings don't have to come down, the ones that will be out of compliance, but what happens is, let's say there's a fire, and the building gets gutted, okay, like a bad hurricane fire. What could happen is, because the allowable density of that building, let's say, is 30% less, okay? When you go to rebuild the building, 30% of the people could lose their units.
Why can't you greenfly those in, in the event of damage?
It doesn't, unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. This is the point. This is our legal, this is the whole issue. But just, I don't want to debate it, because we had public debate, but my point is, this is, you know, when we shelve all the other rhetoric, this is the crux of the issue. And I'm glad the Vice Mayor brought this up, because this is what I was going to try to explain. I'm sorry, you're the Vice Mayor, the former Vice Mayor. Now I'm insulting, now I'm insulting my colleagues. Boy, I'm off kilter tonight. But really, and that's really what Joe Milton was trying to say, because what the real issue is here is that because this mistake was made, buildings were built under a certain, under a certain set of standards, okay? And the truth is, we're not trying to make the standards they were built under any higher. That was how it was being interpreted for the last, what, 15 years, 17? I don't know how long it's been. It's, we're not trying to increase that set of standards, we're just saying, because it was misinterpreted, what we're saying is, if we bring everything up to that set of standards in this district, those buildings are going to be okay if there's ever a big problem. That's really the crux to this whole set of issues. Now, no, no, we're done.
But I'd like to get another, I'd like to actually get another clarification or another opinion on that, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we have the full-
Please, please.
I'm not sure that, I'm just not sure about this, so.
But my point is, but, okay, folks, we're done, we're done with the debate. What I want the commission to do is to, it's time for the commission to speak.
I'd like to have her speak.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. If, in fact, after, at this point in time, it's been articulated that there is a concern about legally or not, nonconforming buildings, is what is proposed this evening been analyzed as the only way to fix this? Could the city look at TDRs that may or may not have been applied on certain approvals? Does this correct the issue on all the buildings that were constructed with this nonconformity that may not be in the mixed-use business, or does that also need to be fixed in the future? And does that need to impact additional acreage that is not, that, I understand the concept of a zoning district boundary, but it sounds like this is something that applies to already constructed and already entitled buildings. What has been proposed here this evening is to allow town center district in mixed use to have future entitlement rights. It sounds like you're doing the opposite of what you might wish to do.
But there's another nuance, okay? There's another nuance, as I understand it. And again, what I want, I want the commission, Courtney, hold on, I want the commission to be able to speak their minds, so we can kind of hear what they have to say, because they may say, hey, let's take it back and look at it again, they may say otherwise, but I don't want to, you know, we're kind of done debating. But the other nuance, from my perspective, is that this interpretation's been going on a long time, and there's been various land planners, lawyers, commissioners, and I think Norman really articulated it the best here. They've been reliant on this. So folks bought land relying on this interpretation, okay? They bought, Ella, come on, Ella, Ella, come on, for God's sakes, come on, I let you, come on, enough already, jeez, come on, you're killing me, so, okay? So they, you know, when folks go to buy land, they're expecting that interpretation. This is another issue. This isn't the issue, the nonconformity issue is, you know, is folks that have already owned units, residents could be impaired if something drastic happened. The other issue is, is folks have come in and they contracted to buy land, or they're buying land based on their interpretation, based on the interpretation that we've, you know, that we've had. So again, you know, there's, in my mind, those are the two things that we're concerned about here.
But, well, here's my question. So I asked the pointed question to our zoning director, does this only affect properties on a going-forward basis? And she said yes. So I guess you're giving me two inconsistent ideas. said yes. So I guess you're giving me two inconsistent ideas. One is, hey, it doesn't affect what happened, what was, was, what happened in the past, and then by the same token, you're saying this only affects properties on a going-forward basis. So, what is it? It seems to me there's an inherent ambiguity in all of this discussion.
Commissioner Goldman, let me clarify that. Today, we have reviewed 14 site plan applications. Out of those 14 site plan applications, 13 they had been approved already. Seven of those were individual projects. Six of them, they had been built under the interpretation that we had been doing. Moving forward, this same interpretation can be applied to these ones that are already existing, and the ones that they can come in front of you. Whenever we have a new site plan application within this mixed-use area, you will have the decision to make at that time. Then you can vote it down, you can vote it up, you can defer it, then you can take the option at that moment.
Yeah, but if it's an as-of-right project, then you, you can't, you create this, you create this entitlement, that it's an as-of-right. So, you know, here's the elephant in the room. So everybody's saying, we have to bifurcate, and we have to separate out this corrective amendment that has such a vast profound impact on everything. We have to bifurcate this mild corrective amendment with this elephant in the room, which is the Infinity Hotel Plan. I just don't see how the two really can be separated, because if we approve it, if we approve this amendment, we give an as-of-right to that particular applicant. So it really is on a going-forward basis, the whole, see, doesn't, it's not, you can't bifurcate, because they are completely conjoined. I don't care what anybody says.
There is not, there is not as-of-right matters, there is not as-of-right matters. And if we have a comprehensive plan today, if we have a comprehensive plan today, today your comprehensive plan allows you for 85 units per acre in that business area. So today, if you had a project, you were allowed, or the applicant is allowed to go for 85 units per acre.
I don't believe it, because if that were the case, we wouldn't be here tonight with all of this acrimony and all this discussion. I don't believe it. I don't believe it.
And I agree, Commissioner, we would not, we would not be here for a clarification or a modification if that were the case. The reason I appreciate the opportunity to give you my input, Commissioner, is because it is one thing to address something that's already constructed, and I think a question to be asked is, what were, was that density, what were those FAR, could they be addressed through TDRs if that is a prior...
Yeah, you're saying, is there another mechanism? I understand.
Mayor, you're also making the comment about, you know, well, people in the future, well, if the city has identified that it has an issue, trying to protect and continue to make future issues, I mean, the dirt exists, it's static.
No, but Courtney, what I'm saying is, let's just say, for example, okay, a year ago, you bought a three-bedroom condo, okay, and today we say, you can't have the third bedroom anymore, because we made a mistake.
Mayor, I understand the...
So you can't use the third bedroom. So basically, again, you know, this is the balance, and I keep saying is that we're here to protect two things, the residents and property rights. We got to protect both. We got to protect the property rights of the residents, the property rights of the properties, just like Danny's property rights. We got to protect everybody's property. It's a balance, it's a balance, and that's the tough trade-off, because a lot of times, you know, the property rights of these developers run in the face of what the residents want, and I get that. But my point is, what's concerning me here is that if folks relied on this mistake, and they bought property, we could suffer exposure.
Well, Mayor, I'm not sure it was your mistake. You have a zoning code that allows more than your comp plan. If one reviewed that, as a new buyer would, they would probably, there's a good chance...
They wouldn't look at the 13 prior interpretations, the way we've...
They would, but they might not write a zoning interpretation and put their errors and omissions...
Here's my, here's my little take on this. We have risk management issues all the way through, okay? We're going to get sued under door number A. If this gets approved, we've already, obviously, lawsuits already been filed. Door number A, we're going to get sued, because this is going to be appealed, it's going to go to court, it's going to go to circuit, or wherever it's going, and appealed at every level. Door number B, if it gets approved, and then the site plan comes in, and it's as-of-right, then that person gets rejected, we're going to get sued. So I think the idea that we're not going to get sued, we're going to get sued in any event, right? I mean, there's no, there's no doubt about it, we're going to have to lawyer up, no matter what direction we turn. So I think it's unfair to say, well, if we don't do this, we get sued by this developer, that developer, non-conforming. It's ripe for litigation, ripe for litigation, all the way through. I see it that way, so.
Yeah, so, so I think what we're, and again, so just to be clear, I think the good news tonight so far, is that I think folks are starting to understand the issue, okay? You know, the issue's not that we want to build 6,000 or 10,000 new hotel units. And I can tell you, it wouldn't happen anyway, because as Danny pointed out, they own most of the land in the district in the first place. So, hey, so, you know, so it's not really, that's not what we're trying to do. Now, just, Jerry, Jerry, hold on, okay, I never interrupted you, so let me talk. So, that's not what we're trying to do, okay? So what's going on here is that, you know, we saw this inconsistency, and we're trying to figure out how to fix it. And this is the methodology that our experts told us what to do, okay? Now, I give everybody great credit, because it got, you know, this campaign of putting it out there, and this 10,000 units, it got everybody's attention, okay? And I'm actually very happy when we get everybody's attention. As much as it, you know, as much as I get daggers thrown at me, what have you, I love this fact that everybody's engaged tonight, and that gives me a lot of faith in our community. Norman's smiling, because he knows exactly what I'm saying. Some of the best meetings that we've ever had were the most contentious sometimes. So, I don't take this stuff personally, I mean, I do take it personally in some ways, but not in the ways that people think. So, but the point is, is that we have a clash of experts here, okay? Danny and his family, you know, they've hired some great experts, you know, they're wealthy people, they put their, and they're, and they're looking to protect their own interests. And as Danny pointed out, you know, that's, you know, he was very, very clear about that, and I don't blame him, okay? If I'm sitting in his shoes, I would do everything I have in my power to do what I can do for myself as well. In our case, the city has a set of experts. We have lawyers, we have, you know, Claudia, we might, we went to outside folks, and our experts say, this is how you fix this problem, okay? This is what our experts are telling us. There's nothing nefarious about that, I can promise you. None of us want to see overdevelopment, and the West Side campaign promises, what we said was, we're not going to apply TDRs and bonuses, and all the things we do on the East Side, we're going to stick with the comp plan. Now, what sensationalized this was, it turns out that for the last 15 years, we've been interpreting something improperly, okay? Giving folks more than, more than they need, unfortunately, okay? And we kind of got handed this bag of rocks, this commission. I'm not blaming anybody, because I think it could have happened to any commission. I don't blame the former mayor, we know each other well, super smart guy, you know, and the fact is, is that it got missed, for one reason or another, you know? And again, you know, I mean, most of the folks in this room are the ones that were upstanding on this stuff for the last 15 years. So, but again, you know, nobody, we're not here to cast blame, we're here to try to fix a problem. And that's really it, that's the long and the short of it. So, you know, I understand what you feel, but it may not fix the problem, you know? It may not fix the problem, I understand, I understand.
I, I, I'd just like to say for the record, I don't see this, I don't see, I don't see this corrective amendment...
Maggie, Maggie.
...as a solution to this problem. I don't think we had...
Maggie, Maggie, come on, please.
I do not see this as a solution to this problem. I am completely opposed to any way to call this a corrective fix to our comprehensive plan amendment, and to suggest that this is completely a separate and apart a corrective fix. For me, I'm just not buying it. I just don't, I think that we need to really, we need to analyze it further, find a better way.
So Dana, what's your recommendation then? Your recommendation is further analysis? Or your recommendation is, is that we leave the properties non-conforming?
I am a no.
Hold on, folks. So I just want to be clear. So your recommendation is that, is that we leave it non-conforming, or that we, or, what's your recommendation?
Is it really non-conforming? Are these property rights, is it really non-conforming? That's my question. I haven't seen a legal opinion, I haven't seen the data, I haven't seen the case law. To me, I don't see this as non-conforming. For me, I think the property rights are vested, and I just, I think it's a mistake that was made, and we just, it's what's done is done, and I'm a no, I'm an absolutely no.
Okay.
I do not see this as the solution to this problem, and I think we need to find a better way to do this than to inherit the increased densities and intensities that will impact our lives for a long time.
So you disagree with, so, again, I just want to be crystal clear. So you disagree with all, with all our experts?
Yes.
That's okay, it's okay, I just want to be clear, that's what you're saying. Hold on, folks, hold on, folks. This is the commission, this is...
Come on.
Danny, 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 I let you speak, Danny, it's our turn to speak, okay?
This is not the solution to this problem. It's not the solution for me.
Okay, so, okay, so that's a deflection, it's okay, it's okay. Okay.
Shh, 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 shh.
Okay, okay, let's go through the rest of the commission. I think Dana, Dana stated her position. Alex, do you want to go next?
Yeah, so... Good evening, everybody. So first of all, I have some notes here. Please remember that we're here to fix an issue that was created over 10 years ago, okay? Please, no hand gestures, no comments, I'm trying to read here. So there's been a lot of factual information that was presented, also a lot of exaggerations, misinformation, and data that I questioned a lot. So I beg everybody, don't believe everything you read, or everything you hear. This is, this vote is not about the 6,000 hotel rooms, as that article alluded to. It didn't allude to that, it said it plain and out clearly. So when I read that article, I was like, flabbergasted, because that's not the case, that's not what we're voting on today. Okay, so that's totally misleading. The issue is that we need to fix this. There's a mismatch between our zoning code and our comprehensive plan. So we need to be compliant with state law, all right? It is our responsibility and duty for us to fix the situation that happened in the past, okay? Now, I heard a lot about the canyon, that we don't want to be part of a canyon, just so, please keep in mind this, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, Claudia, there's height limits to the West Side construction. Correct? Yes or no? Can you come up?
Yes, there are high limits in the West Side.
What's the height? What's the height?
Yeah, go ahead.
She could, she could tell us what...
There are, there are...
There's different height limits, but is not...
What's the highest?
Hold on, it's not gonna, you're not gonna see what you see on the East Side, on the West Side, so there's not...
What is the height?
290 feet.
What's the highest? How many stories is there?
Hold on.
How many stories is there?
Ella, Ella.
29 stories.
29 stories, yeah, yeah. Okay, also, hold on, just to be clear, it depends upon the area, but that's the current code. That's not, we didn't create that code, that's the current code.
We can't have that.
I understand.
Thank you.
Okay.
So also, keep something in mind that, you know, we're being presented with a solution, okay? We may not agree with it, you might disagree with it, but I call, and I would like to see perhaps other options presented to us, and I would like to defer this vote. I would like to analyze information, I would like to see, you know, because there's an issue here with buildings that are quote-unquote "non-conforming," so I'm concerned about those buildings and the residents that are in there. We represent everybody here, okay? So we need to fix the issue for them. But also, I have a concern with the FAR, okay? The dwelling units, it's correct, from my assessment, you know, the comprehensive plan has a base of 25 dwelling units per acre, and a max of 85 dwelling units per acre, giving bonuses and TDRs, et cetera. But I do have a concern, and I want to reconcile the FAR increase with the issue that we have, that we need to, you know, be within state law compliance. And we need to fix that issue. And for that reason, there's a lot of information, I'd like to defer this vote.
Okay, thank you, Alex.
And analyze the issue.
Okay, hold on, folks, hold on, hold on, folks. Go ahead. Jennifer?
You could do anything, if you really wanted to.
I wish we could do anything, not that easy.
I know, I know.
Believe me, I wish we could do anything. Trust me, trust me.
For those, for those who were not here for the December meeting, you should know that the Infinity project was in front of us. We deferred on it, because we did share your concerns of the traffic, so we're not a body who is here just to sign off on development, because if that were the case, the Infinity project would already be a reality. So we are, we do live here, we are stuck in the traffic, we, I think we all live on the West Side, so we're, we're not blind or deaf to those concerns. At the same time, I, you know, we do have a battle of the experts, somebody has to be right and somebody has to be wrong, we can't both be right. And we do have a responsibility to, to everyone, including those who might have been affected by this mistake. And I'm concerned about that exposure to them. So, I wanted to ask a question to, as I imagine the city manager may, can speak to this. If we don't correct this, are there financial, are there financial repercussions to any current developments or, or projects? Like financing consequences?
Well, the, off the top of my head, the thing that comes to mind, when, when, if you're talking financially, one of the things that is pretty typical in many of our projects is that the, the, either developer, or in some cases, it's an individual, like for example, I see Rabbi Kaller here, who's building a Habad, and, you know...
I can't hear you.
The individuals or developers that are building in this, in any area of the city typically need a letter from the city for their financing companies, wherever they're getting their financing, that, that their project conforms, that their project conforms and is legally sufficient, you know, in all ways. That's off the top of my head, I mean, that's a, that's a pretty serious one, too. You don't want people to be out of compliance with their financing and lose it.
Okay, thank you. My, I do have a concern for the people who currently have the exposure, and I do feel that we have a fiduciary duty to them. This is, this vote is on this district. I'm voting yes, and I know that you're not going to like that, but I'm voting yes on it, on, because I do trust our experts, and I believe that doing this, that doing this change does not increase the density or the intensity. That is, that is my understanding, and that is my belief, and that is why I'm voting yes, because it does protect the people who currently have that exposure.
All right, Marissa.
Shh, 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 please. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I was actually very excited about having this meeting, because I knew that many of you would come. I received, I don't know, maybe 100 emails, so I apologize if I didn't reply to you, I was trying to reply as soon as possible. I met with a few people, and interestingly enough, they're not here, because we had a very fruitful conversation. What the Commissioner Viscara was referencing in December, she's absolutely correct. I actually am the one that made the motion to defer it, because of, not just the traffic, school issue, because that is very important to me. Actually, all of us, except for Bud, the mayor rather, has children in the school. So, we, you know, we live here, too, we experience exactly the same things that you do, and the reason that we ran for office was because we started off coming to commission meetings, and we didn't, we didn't agree with some of the things that were being done. So one of the very first commission meetings I went to was to oppose the Marriott, you know? One of the first developments that I opposed was one that's going up on 158th Street because of the school, because of the traffic. So, please understand that, like the mayor said, there's nothing nefarious happening here, and as elected officials, we have to rely on our experts, because that's what we...
Not from Johnny Housen, only from you.
So, so, no, so, with, with, with all due respect, we waited a really long time, my mouth is super dry, because I went waiting to speak, so please, if you can just wait. Now, my question to the city attorney, because one of the speakers, I apologize, I forgot her name, she made a comment that I thought was very valid. She said, you know... She said, you know, a lot of the jargon here is very challenging to understand, and it is, unless you are dealing with it on a regular basis. So I'm going to ask plainly what I don't believe anyone asked. Why can't we change the zoning to match the comprehension, the comprehensive plan?
You can, we can consider doing that after you do this.
Okay.
Please, please. Please. Go ahead, Ed.
So can you, can you please explain that further and try to make it as plain language?
Please be quiet. Did anybody interrupt you when you were speaking? No, thank you. Okay. Okay. Ed, go ahead. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. State law currently requires that for our comprehensive plan, there has to be for mixed use, mixed uses, a specification as to density and intensity. We do not have that in the mixed use in the town center. We have to correct that in order to come into compliance with state law. Once we do that, we can conduct studies. You can direct that studies be conducted to consider changing the zoning code to make it less dense or less, less FAR. But we, we can't do that in a vacuum, of course, because we may be taking, we may be taking our case rights away from them if we, if we try and do that. So we need to have studies done in order to do, but it is possible, but we have to take this step first in order to ensure that those buildings that were previously constructed are compliant with zoning code and the comprehensive plan.
Let me, I want to ask a question. Dana, can I speak?
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. I want to ask after that. Okay, go ahead.
All right. So let's say that it is approved. What stops us then from changing the zoning and the comprehensive plan to bring down the density? Does anything stop us from?
As long as you have legitimate studies that, that provide a rational basis for you to do that, then yes, you can go ahead and do that.
Okay. So, Mr. Manager. So based on what we have right now in front of the planning department, are there any developments besides the one that was deferred that we are anticipating that would be impacted?
Not that I know of, Claudia. There's nothing else, right?
That's in this district. But I mean, if you, yeah, if you look at, if you look at the city as a whole, if you look at the city as a whole, there's, there's other things happening.
In this district, there is no applications, additional applications beside Infinity.
Right, right, exactly. And let me just, again, I'd like clarification. If this change was made, is there anything that legally stops us from voting no on the Infinity project as it was presented in December?
Vice Mayor, I can't answer that question because until that project comes before you in a quasi judicial proceeding, which this is not, this is a legislative determination, and they comply, they comply with the provisions in your comp plan and your zoning code, then you get to make the determination based upon the facts that are presented to you at that meeting. So there is no such thing as as of right. It's only as of right once you approve it. Once they receive your approval, then they have the right to construct the building. Until then, they have to comply with the zoning code and land development code.
Okay.
Okay, I have a quick question. So what's, it's, it's clear that if this is approved, there's going to be an appeal, and there's going to be, what's to stop the state from denying it because they, in other words, they can very well deny it the same way they did in 2007, right?
That's absolutely correct.
And what kind of, what's going to happen? So there's going to be an appeal and a litigation, a protracted process? So this is going to be kind of in situ for what? Two years, three years? I mean, we're talking about freezing all of the zoning and everything that's going on here for what? A three-year period, a four-year period?
It's, it's hard to estimate how long that happens, but let me tell you what the process is today. If you approve this first reading of the ordinance today, we have 10 days within which to send it to the state of Florida, the Department of Economic Opportunity, DEO. They have 30 days within which to review it and to provide comments back to the city. Once we get those comments back, the city has 180 days to either adopt their recommended changes or scrap the whole thing. All right? And then, I believe, and I'm sure Ms. Crush can correct me if I'm wrong, but then I believe that affected parties have 30 days within which to file an administrative complaint with the Division of Administrative Hearings in Tallahassee. That will take several months to get through, and then it goes back to DEO for a final order, either approving the recommendation of the administrative law judge or rejecting that. Once, I need to make this very clear. This is a legislative determination. As long as you have a rational basis for adopting this ordinance, and you're not adopting it tonight, we're merely saying we're transmitting this to the state of Florida for its consideration. They could do exactly what they did in 2007 and say that the data and the analysis that we've provided them, and which is part of your backup, is insufficient. And then we'd be put in a position of either providing them more data and analysis or changing the, the three sentences that we're trying to clarify in the thing.
Can I ask a question? So I just thought of this. So what if they deny it and we are unable to provide any additional studies? What happens to those properties? They're in limbo forever?
Well, what, what I would suggest is we ask clarification from them on that, on that specific issue. You know, if they're going to reject it, that we ask DEO to provide us with options that we can, that we might be able to adopt in order to satisfy that issue.
So they may be able to.
Perhaps you could ask that now.
Right. I mean, I guess that's, that's my big question.
Well, that's what, that's exactly what we're doing by transmitting it to them.
No, actually, you're not. And Mr. Deon, since you asked, Mayor, with your permission, if I agree with you on process, just troubled when I'm hearing that this is because the comp plan is not in compliance with state law based on the 2011 statute. I believe based on the fact that there is an existing density in your comprehensive plan in the mixed use district, that in 2016, when you transmitted your ear reports, the state agrees you're in compliance. So you do have, you do have a density. I'm very troubled that this was just another reason or statement that I wanted to make sure my client was all clear on. I understand the nonconforming buildings. But your city, so far throughout the course of this discussion and hearing, has indicated that you are in compliance with state law. You do have a maximum density and intensity, both in the mixed use and also in the high res.
Not, not in intensity in that, in that town center.
Right, right. Not in intensity.
You do, with respect to the maximum FAR, yes, of 2.0.
But not as to the mixed use business in the town center.
The underlying land use is going to control it. I understand.
This is, this is an overlay. And it's not there.
There's a, there's a zoning.
Well, we're going to have to agree to disagree.
Well, I think your staff report actually agrees with me.
I don't, I don't, I don't think that's.
So has the city entertained this TDR proposal? Because I mean, nobody briefed me on the TDRs as an, as an alternative solution. In fact, we went through extensive briefings, and this is the first I'm hearing about this TDRs.
Let me address the TDRs. So existing in the comprehensive plan, we have language that we have also limitations to assign TDRs to certain properties. The properties in questions that we have today, they have received already the maximum capacity on transfer development rights. So you will be in the same problem that you are today, that you're going to be assigning entitlements to projects that are going to be not inconsistent with your comprehensive plan and your zoning. Therefore, you will have to, again, amend your comprehensive plan to allow for more TDRs in those areas.
So what, why would we be in any different position to amend for that purpose as opposed to just add dumping all this intensity and density on this area?
Because you will have to.
Hold on, hold on, folks. You know, just to be clear, I don't, I think we're going to get somewhere in a few minutes, but I don't want to wing this one tonight because I think this needs, this all needs to be looked at, you know, a little bit more. Yeah, yeah, but I have a proposal. I have a proposal to split the baby. No, hold on. But I have a proposal to split the baby because I don't think we have to. So Larissa, you had the floor. I didn't mean to cut you off. I'm sorry.
Yeah. That's my train of thought.
He keeps us from voting no.
Yeah, I, I think that, just going back to what I started with, I do, while I do trust our experts, that's what they're there for. I'm not an attorney. I'm not an engineer. I'm not a city planner, and I don't need to be, neither do any of you. You voted us in so that we work to get this done. But based on the amount of confusion and a lot of the information that I, some of the information I know for sure is not correct, but I think that it's important that everyone here gets as much information as possible, so I support Alex's request for.
She said she supports Alex's request for deferral. So, okay. Okay. So I think I'm going to lose this one, but here, but here's my proposal. I'd like to hear what the state has to say, honestly, because I think that, I think there's a lot of ambiguity going on. The good news is, this is a two-vote process. It's two meetings, okay? So what I would suggest is that we send it to the state. We, hear me out. Come on, folks, just hear me out. I would suggest we send it to the state. While it's going through this process, we get all our experts together and we see if we can figure out a better way to do this. Because ultimately, ultimate, okay. Thank you. So, thank you. Thank you. Okay, when you're done, I'll, I'll finish, but in the meantime, we'll wait. Yeah, so, okay. So what I'd like to, so what I'm saying is, is that if we, if we send it to the state, we can get the state's comments during that process, and it's a long process. It's going to take months and months and months, as, as the city attorney pointed out. We can, we can see if we can figure out ways to mitigate it and figure out a better way to do it. Can I finish, please? Come on, folks. Come on, come on, folks. No, approving it tonight does not approve it. All it does is send it to the state. Let's be clear. It just sends it to the state for additional analysis by the state. Again, you heard the process. All right, I can't, I can't, you know, you guys are killing me here.
All right. I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to further, I'd like to make a motion. We, we need to defer this, obviously. There's just too much, too much, too much, too much ambiguity. I think we're all in agreement, you know, about that.
Can I finish my statement before you make the motion?
All right. Finish your statement.
So, again, okay? So again, just to be clear, what we have here is, you know, we have a mistake that was made. We've been clear about that, okay? We have certain properties that have been affected by that mistake, okay? If we don't correct the mistake, those properties have a problem. Those homeowners, in the event of something catastrophic, and it's a reach to say that something catastrophic could happen, but it could happen. In the event of something catastrophic, they have exposure, okay? Anyone, anyone in this room could live in one of those buildings, okay? And I didn't even think about the financing aspect. That building's homeowners association could go for a, some kind of a loan to do renovation on the building, and it's a nonconforming building, and the lender may say no. Okay? So there's exposure there, too. I didn't think about that. Chris just pointed that out, and that, you know, that was a new one for me. But, so the point is, something's got to be done one way or another, okay? We can't leave those folks hanging out to dry. You know, what I heard tonight was, come on, Ella, Ella, come on. When you're, the next time you're up, I'm going to start doing the, doing the dance here. So, so something's got to be done to fix the problem, okay? And so the, the point is, is that we don't, I don't know what the state's comments are, what they're going to come back with, but I believe we have time if we run this through the process. So we have a second vote. We'll have a second vote in, you know, eight months to a year from now, and then, and then by that time, I think everybody could do a very, very thorough analysis. But in the meantime, we're going to get additional data.
I'd like to, I'd like to also chime in a little bit. I think we need, I, I think we need to have, in, in, in an effort to have transparency, we need to have something in writing, we need to have options, we need to have alternatives. We don't want an upzoning. We don't, we don't want, we don't want just the correction that's going to create all this additional impacts. We want to see it in writing. We want to really understand the impacts to the existing owners and developers, and we want to find viable solutions and alternatives. So in that event, we, I do want to, I do want to make a motion to defer.
Okay, so with that, I'll take a motion. Do we have a motion to defer? Do we have a second?
Second.
A second? Okay. You had one more comment? Okay, it's okay. Another comment?
I apologize.
Please, please, please.
Come on. You know, there have been, clearly, there's, there's a sense here that you guys are not trusting with the process. And I, with, with your permission, I would, and with all due respect, Ed, I'd like to call Lynn Danheiser to come up because she was our original city attorney to just help clarify, since you've all been waiting for, what is it, 10:30?
Hold on a second. Can I say one thing? I got to say one thing, everyone watching. You had a 13-year mistake, okay? She was the one who found it, okay? I'm fine with paying for her time. Courtney Crush found it, okay? They, they found it. How did Courtney found it? The 13-year mistake. I'll offer, and I'll pay for her time to meet with your staff, and then we can figure out what is the right answer, what's the wrong answer. But obviously, so far, she knows we don't know anybody else here, and I know he's new to the job. He might not know everything here, but it seems like, how do we make an decision right now?
Yeah. Danny, you have a motion to defer. Okay. All right. Okay. Let Larissa finish. Let Larissa finish.
Look, okay, you know what?
Lynn has nothing to do with this. Why would we listen to her?
Because we've listened to everyone, and she isn't, she's an expert in this. She's got the history. There's been complaints that our attorney has not been here long enough. And I'm just, if you want more information, and you came here for information, then I think that it is in everyone's best interest to hear her out. So if we could just get very abridged version to help us better understand from a different point of view.
Okay. Lynn Danheiser, 3152 Gifford Lane. I'm going to try to make it short, but I think that we've kind of blown this thing up. A plan has to be consistent with the zoning code. We know that. In the old days, when, and I started as a city attorney in 1986, I was 14. We, no, before 2011, it was very common to just put your density and your intensity in the zoning code. There was no mandate that that be included in the comprehensive plan. In 2011, when the, and I'm, I'm sure Courtney can back me up on this, too. In 2011, there was a huge fight in the legislature, and forgive me, I'm a land use professor, so I've got to do it this way, okay? It was a huge fight because the comprehensive plan was supposed to be a policy document, and it was supposed to be just about setting the vision and the goals and the objectives and all the specifics, the density, the intensity, the height, the FAR, the light cover, all that stuff was in the zoning code. And the people who wanted it to be in both documents won. In 2011, that statute was passed. If we had done this, then we wouldn't be sitting here talking about it now. And there's been a lot of confusion since. I do believe that we have to make this consistent personally. But I also believe, and I tried to step out with Courtney while everybody was talking because I think there is a solution, and I think we put people's minds together and we'll come up with that. Unfortunately, I was interrupted, so we never got a chance, but we, you know, we, we can, we'll find the solution. We will find it.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Lynn. So, so Danny, don't, don't be so quick to...
And I wanna just, and I wanna add one more thing. That solution has to protect the property owners, for which we've already given approvals. We have done the same thing since 2004, okay? So, you know, that's not their fault. We need to find a way to not have them be non-conforming uses, but there's also gotta be a way that we can come into compliance with the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I have a motion to defer.
Motion to defer.
I have a second.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're, we're gonna defer. Thank you. Okay. It's only 10:40. We did better than I thought we were gonna do. I was, I was, I was betting 11:30.
We're not done.
I know we're not done, but we're gonna take a 10-minute break. So, let's take a 10-minute break.
We're on number 8B, 7B now.
Let's go. Let's get everybody back to the dais. Yeah, 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 Ella. As you know, she's just, you know. Yeah, I got mine. Okay, everybody back to the dais, please, so we can keep going. Let's go. No, no. Basically, the rest of the meeting is going to be boring, so I can promise you. So, yeah, very fast. We're going to rip through the rest of this stuff. So, okay, everybody up here? Okay, Mauricio, where are you? Okay, Mauricio, get out of the restroom. Let's go. Yeah, Mauricio left the building, so. Okay, 10L. Okay, we're waiting on the clerk. You can't start without the clerk. Okay, if everybody who wants to chat can step outside and chat, I'd appreciate it, because we're going to start the meeting again. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming. Okay, Mauricio, we're going to skip ahead and do, um...
Is everybody gone?
Yeah, yeah, we're not done yet. Yeah, okay, okay. Item 10L, Mauricio?
I don't fully understand this, but it's an... I was talking to a former mayor.
Shh, 10L, yeah.
All right, we're taking 10L out of order?
Okay, 10L is a resolution approving an agreement with Craven Thompson and Associates, Inc. to provide engineering consulting services for the Golden Shores Utility Undergrounding and Roadway Improvements Project.
Okay.
All right.
Chris, you want to speak to it?
Yeah, so Paul is here to say a few words about this also. I know, I want to get him out of here.
Paul's tired. Kind of wrote this one out, you know?
Tim Hall from Craven Thompson, who was involved in our undergrounding in the very beginning, until he jumped ship and went to a different engineering firm. But he was the expert from the beginning with Keith and Schnars. But this, making this recommendation for the contract approval with Craven Thompson started with our RFQ back last year. As you may recall, we, I think we got five responses. We ranked three engineering firms. They were number one, and we were able to negotiate a contract with them for the work in Golden Shores. The contract amount is $922,000 and change. This is going to take about a year and a half or so.
A year and a half. The engineering and data gathering. Well, Chris has really told you the whole story. I wanted to introduce Tim. We are incredibly fortunate with Tim's background and undergrounding experience and that...
Dave?
He was with Keith and Schnars, and then now Craven Thompson. They won on their credentials, but Tim had a major influence on that decision. We want to start, we want to start August 1st with data gathering, meeting with utilities. There have been some changes within the utility company management people, and we just want to go, I think, optimistically, within a year to 15 months, we can have the documents together, ready to bid. That'll be a process, as we well know, coming back, analyzing the bids, and coming back to you. But we want to have this project done, as you do, as quickly as possible, and I think we really have the right team now.
Good. And Jerry, you've got to convince your neighbors to connect, because they don't put the boxes in, they don't connect, FPL doesn't energize. Seriously, we went through this on Atlantic Island, and it's brutal, the last couple people that hold out. Literally, on Atlantic Island, we ended up paying for it, because it was cheaper than the delay that we were going through waiting for FPL. So I'm just saying that, you know, if you've got any clout in your neighborhood, you've got to tell folks, you know, what they've got to... Anyway, is there any questions for Paul or for Tim?
I am.
Go ahead.
What is your estimate, best-case scenario, when this work will start and how long it will take?
Well, let's... Best case, if everything is 100% ideal, and we have bidding documents in 12 months, it'll take us four months, ideally, to bid it and bring a recommendation to you. That is within your hands, say, a month. So say if in 18 months, we are ready to put the shovels in the ground, this is 225 homes. I think we can do that in a year.
Oh, that's good.
I think, best-case scenario, we could be done in two and a half to three years, totally. Ready to go.
Figure four years.
Yeah, three to four years, but she asked best case.
We've never not...
If we don't push, then we never make it, and you know me, I push.
Well, we have some Golden Shores residents, that's why I'm asking for clarification. And can you again repeat, what's the amount of the investment? How much is it going to cost?
I honestly, because of the unknowns of the low voltage, the AT&amp;T, the Atlantic Broadband, the Hotwire, the Comcast, we have a binding estimate from FPL, but the rest of the pieces... So I'm going to ask your indulgence, and let me come back to you with a report on real cost as we are developing drawings. I don't want to put a number out tonight, and it be grossly high or grossly low.
But it's not going to be an additional cost to the residents of Golden Shores?
There's some discussions and decisions that have to be made by the commission about the final hookup. That's not a substantial amount of money, but the infrastructure...
No, I meant the infrastructure, not the final...
Infrastructure, and to remind the residents of Golden Shores, we're doing a street lighting project, we're doing some selective sidewalk improvements and landscaping. We've got to do the data, so we know what the demands are. Then we have to identify the locations of equipment, because we're going to have easements.
Yeah.
We'd love to get everything within the right-of-way. The small equipment, the transformers, the pedestals for low voltage, will all be in the right-of-way. But we're going to have switches and big transformers and capacitors and all that same stuff that's out on Collins. Not... You saw the map, you saw the...
Right, no.
All those little pins. We've got to find the spots to make those things work.
Jerry, you have a question?
As far as AT&amp;T goes, we have the oldest equipment in Golden Shores. They're supposed to be coming with fiber, but I don't know if you're coordinating with them about the fiber or not?
Well, and...
It's up to them, yeah.
Absolutely, that's the whole point, and that's my statement about why I'm so anxious to get it started. They will bring a fiber hub. All of the trench, with the patch down the middle of Atlantic, that has AT&amp;T conduit in it, with the intention of bringing a fiber hub, that's not guaranteeing that you'll have fiber to your home, but we'll have a fiber service. That's what's going all down Collins and Atlantic and everything else, so... But that's why we stayed tonight. I didn't want to wait until October to have this approval. I want to go.
Well, if we didn't let you go early, you'd be here till October. Okay, do I have any more questions for, okay, Chris? Okay, any more questions? Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Do I hear a second? All in favor? Aye, go home.
I want to just mention something to the commission, Paul. Paul, just one second. One of the things that I made a decision to keep them going is, we put in the current street lighting project on Collins. We estimated a fairly small percentage of problems with the location of the bases for the streetlights, because, you know, we go by plans and things that are marked out. What we're finding is, many more locations aren't what we expected when we've gotten in there, and we've had to use spread footers versus taking the new bases or what have you, and just being able to put them in. Spread footers is three times the cost of each base, just about. What was it, $3,500, more like $95?
We had anticipated from the engineering data received that we would have three of those, and the initial cost was about $4,000. This new wind load, since the original design and the complications and the depth of the footings, we're at three times that cost. And so far, from 163rd to 178th, we've identified 16 of 28 lights that will have to go on spread footings. That's been that nasty operation you've been seeing going on in the middle of the sidewalk, and why there are steel plates in the sidewalk. The old concrete has to come out, the excavation has to go down 32 inches, a steel cage with all the bolts. But we're moving, and we have a pattern, and we have a plan. The good news is, we have found alternate locations for electrical energy, even though, you know, I've told you before, we won't have streetlights permanently lit until the undergrounding's done. But we have found sources for all but one location of streetlights, which is on the east, excuse me, the west side, from about 163rd to 178th. Other than that, we're going to be able to light the lights as we're installing them.
Good.
It'll be patchwork for a while, but we'll have all lights lit.
Okay.
That's more what we're looking for.
All right, keep going.
Okay, thanks, guys. All right. Okay, we're back to item 7B. Mauricio?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 217 entitled Rental Property of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Hills Beach to modify renewal timeframes and inspection requirements, providing for survivability, providing for repealer, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
This ordinance, actually, it is proposing to address certain issues that we have with the first renewal that we're going through with the short-term rentals. So in some cases, a license can be valid, the city license can be valid for more than a year, in conflict with state and county licenses. So we want to make sure to remove that language from the existing ordinance to make it valid for just a 12-month period. And the second item that it's doing, that is basically providing for enforcement in a more proactive way instead of a reactive way.
Got it. Any questions for Claudia?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Do I hear a second? Okay, second. Mauricio?
Commissioner Lama? Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Satchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be on September 19th.
Thank you. Okay, pointed procedure, we did a voice vote on the deferral for an ordinance, is that okay? Okay, because we didn't vote on it, okay, so we could voice vote the deferral? I just want to make sure it's valid.
No, it's fine.
Okay, good.
We don't...
No, there's no...
For an ordinance, we need the roll call, but for a regular motion, we can do it by voice vote.
Okay, so 7A, so 7A, we can defer it with a voice vote? Got it. Being careful. Okay, ordinances for second reading, you've got 9A, our budget amendment?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending ordinance number 2018-526, approving budget amendment number BA 1819-02 to the city's operating capital improvement budget for the 2018-2019 fiscal year. General fund, street maintenance and construction fund, building fund, public art trust fund, capital projects fund, stormwater fund, and stormwater capital fund, authorizing the city manager to do all things necessary to implement the terms and conditions of this ordinance, providing for an effective date. And this is second and final reading.
Honorable mayor and commission, this is our second budget amendment for the year. You have all the details there, so I won't go into them.
Yeah, we... I think we... Good. Okay, we have all the details. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Voice vote?
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Satchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for waiting, Tiffany. 9B?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 217 entitled Rental Property of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Hills Beach to modify the fees for license section, providing for survivability, providing for repealer, providing for inclusion in the code, providing for an effective date. Second and final reading.
Again, the short-term rental ordinance, and this change is to modify how we modify the charges for this ordinance, so it will be adopted just through a resolution, not an ordinance.
Got it. Any questions for Claudia? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Mauricio?
Vice Mayor Satchin?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, Claudia. We move on to resolutions. We've already taken care of 10A and 10B, so we go to 10C.
A resolution approving an agreement between Ronald L. Bug, PA, and the City of Sunny Hills Beach for professional legislative relation and lobbying services.
So this is a renewal at the same rates of last year with Ron. Last year, he helped us with the $425,000 grant for the 174th Street Bridge.
We used to at least get an update from him once a year, but I guess we're not paying enough, so.
Well, we can get him to come in and do that.
Remember, Ron used to come, and I know, you've got to go to Tallahassee. You've got to go to Tallahassee and kiss the ring.
No, you've got to go to Tallahassee.
Yes, you've got to kiss the ring.
Or Avantura.
You know, with Ron, I always say, you don't want him against you. That's really what you're paying for, so. Okay, any questions regarding the lobbying services? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries, item 10D.
A resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Sunny Hills Beach and the American Flood Coalition for a flood adaptation assessment pilot project.
Good evening, or I should say, good night, mayor and commissioners. In May, we submitted an application for a competitive award for a flood and sea level rise vulnerability assessment through the American Flood Coalition, and we were selected, along with the town of Surfside, to do a micro-regional study. And the American Flood Coalition has partnered with Atkins Global, a design and engineering firm with offices and clients around the world, to perform this pilot study. The resolution before you tonight is to authorize the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Flood Coalition to complete the assessment, which we expect to have in hand by the end of the year. The slight change to the resolution is just to approve it in substantially the same form, so that we can make sure we're collaborating with Surfside, and that our memorandum of understanding has the same or better terms than their.
Okay. Any questions? Great. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item 10E?
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Hills Beach, Florida, approving an increase in the registration for the short-term rental of multifamily dwelling units.
So based on the ordinance, we are proposing this resolution to increase the fees on the short-term rentals from $100 to $300. So overall, it will cost the owners instead of $200, $210, $410 for the first year, and $400 for every consecutive years.
Understood. Any questions?
Just a quick question. Do the license, are the license fees at all covering the costs associated?
Not in the first or second year, probably with this increase in the third year after the analysis that we did in five years, but not yet.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, are we the cost of who?
Of running...
Of administrating it.
The administrative cost.
Yeah, of administrating it, so. Okay, any other questions?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia. Item 10F?
A resolution approving the request submitted by Sunny Hills Property Venture, LLC, to place two temporary signs at the Ritz-Carlton Residences Project located at 15701, 15795, Collins Avenue.
Good evening, honorable mayor, vice mayor, commissioners. This item is to request approval for two temporary banners located at the Ritz-Carlton Project. If it's approved, they'll be up for a year from the date of approval.
Okay, any questions regarding the temporary banners?
No.
No? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. 10G?
A resolution, amending resolution number 2018-2790 to reduce the composition of the Public Arts Advisory Committee from seven members to five members.
Okay.
That was supposed to be Lynn, but I think she...
We're shrinking the pack, okay.
She's with Courtney Cross.
It's because of an attendance issue.
I got it. Okay, any questions regarding shrinking the pack?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
A motion carries. Item 10H, we're cooking now.
A resolution approving an agreement with Calvin Giordano and Associates, Inc., to provide consulting and engineering services for the Golden Shores Pump Station Rehabilitation Project.
Okay, Rick.
Okay, Rick, CGA, what do we got?
Evening, commissioners, good morning.
No, 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 53 more minutes, it'll be morning. Yeah.
This is a resolution for approval of Calvin Giordano as our consultant to do a redesign and upgrade of our pump station in Golden Shores for future flood protection, taking into sea level rise, street protection, and overall, just to upgrade the whole station, generators, automatic equipment. It's been a while, and it's old, so it's due.
Sorry about that. We get punchy up here. Any questions regarding the pump station upgrade?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. 10I.
A resolution authorizing an increase to purchase order with Home Depot for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Honorable mayor and commission, this is a resolution to increase our blanket purchase order. We originally had it set for $60,000 based upon historical purchases. We noticed that our spending trend is actually a little bit more than that this year, and so the additional $20,000, which takes it to an amount not to exceed $80,000, will take us through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay. Any questions regarding the Home Depot spending limit? I think I'm part of the $100,000 club at Home Depot myself, but...
No, I am.
You are?
Yes.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you. 10J. See, we have a lot of interest in our millage rate in the audience tonight.
A resolution...
The only thing that really affects them. And there's nobody here.
We needed to open with this.
I know.
Next time we open with this.
Think about it, I think to Jeanette's point, but I'm sorry, Tiffany, go ahead.
A resolution establishing the City of Sunny Hills Beach proposed ad valorem tax millage levy rate at 2.200 mils per 1,000 of taxable assessed value, which is 2.20% less than the rollback rate of 2.2495 mils for fiscal year 2019-2020.
So this resolution is to establish the proposed 2019-2020 millage rate at 2.2, as well as at the public budget hearings, which are scheduled for September 10th and September 18th.
Got it.
So the first reading will be the 10th at 5:30, and then the 18th at 6:00 before the regular commission.
Correct.
I think we discussed it this morning in the workshop, so any questions regarding the millage rate?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Tiffany. 10K?
A resolution authorizing the city manager to sign or renew all required contracts, agreements, and purchase orders that affect the health, safety, or welfare of the city during the summer recess period from the last city commission meeting in July 2019 through the first regular commission meeting in September 2019.
Okay, that means we're going to let Chris do his duty in August this year, so. Any questions?
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Most I ever spent one of these months was 1.7 million.
Okay, that's good. And that was at Home Depot, so go figure.
What's that called, at your coastal park over there?
All right, we already handled 10L, 10M?
10M is a resolution approving an agreement with Hardisty and Hanover LLP for peer review services for the pedestrian overpass bridge over Collins Avenue at 180th Street.
Okay, Rick. You're up again.
Rick Lebinsky, city engineer, for the record. This contract is associated with the government center pedestrian bridge project that we're presently doing. Due to the complexity of the design and current DOT policy, they're asking us to hire an outside peer review consultant to check the 90% plans for the bridge to make sure everything's correct. So that's what this will do.
Okay, any questions for Rick? Okay, do I hear a motion?
Is he involved during construction?
No, it's just through...
It's just for coordinating the plans?
Yeah, 90% and 100% final design.
Yeah. Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Last but not least, 10N?
10N is a resolution... A resolution ratifying the expenditure of funds for the acquisition of easements for the pedestrian overpass bridge to be located over Collins Avenue and 174th Street.
Okay.
This is just a ratification of the action we took at the last meeting.
We actually, yeah, because we actually closed on landing on the easement, so that's what we were talking about this morning, and then I want to see us, you know, start focusing on the park, moving the fence back, and, you know, widening that sidewalk all the way down. I think it's a great, I think we're lucky to be able to do it, so. Okay, any questions regarding the easement acquisition?
No.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion carries. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, especially the staff. Thank you for waiting. I hope the...